I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, May 28, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Shaw McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley?
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul?
Here.
City manager Rick Holden?
Here.
City attorney Ashley Smith?
Here.
The deputy clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. And let's just make a note that Commissioner McDonald is joining us by phone tonight. She's not invisible, I promise. Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the invocation given by Pastor Louis Olivas of Christ Community Church and the, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Reardon. If you'll all stand, please.
Would you guys join me in prayer? Almighty and God, we give you thanks and praise for all your mighty works. You're a loving God, you're a good God, and you're a gracious God. Lord, before we continue with this prayer, Lord, with this meeting, God, or before we start in general, Lord, I do wanna lift today Stephen Monica Burnett, Commissioner Burnett, for the loss of their daughter, Lord. I know that their hearts are filled with sorrow and grief, Lord. So, Lord, I just, I just ask that you pour out your mercy on them, God, and let your shape, your face shine upon them, Lord. And I thank you, God, that you always sustain us, Lord, that you sustain us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image and you gave us community, Lord. So with that, we thank you for our city, Lord. We thank you for our elected officials, for the businesses, for the churches, for the families, and all the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. But, Lord, we acknowledge that we do not deserve this good gift. We are not worthy of your favor, for we have sinned against you through word and our deeds, Lord, and our thoughts. We do things that we should not do, and we don't do things that we should do all the time, Lord. So we have not loved you with our whole heart, and we have not loved our neighbors as ourselves. So forgive us, Father, and give us hearts of obedience to your holy scriptures. Grant us, grant our city, that our city will be known as a righteous city, a city that confesses Jesus as Lord, a city of peace and hope, a city that welcomes strangers, a city that cares for the needy, and that defends the innocent from evildoers. Lord, I thank you for civil government, for those who bear the sword, and they do so as your ministers, to be a terror to crime. I pray for our civil servants and our city commissioners would acknowledge this calling and perform it faithfully. Be with our mayor, Lord, with our judges, our attorneys, our law enforcement. Grant them that they would never neglect the abuse or abuse their authority, but that they would stand firm for the, for truth and justice. Keep them safe from harm as they serve our community. And I pray for this meeting, Lord, this afternoon, that you give here, everyone here, wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on items, on the guidance before them, Lord. May their decisions be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which is one nation, one home, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we are gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Okay, I do have several people signed up for public comment, but it looks like all but one is under item 14, and then I have one under item 17. If you don't mind, I'm gonna wait until we get to that item and let you speak. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, all right, very good. All right, so with that, we're gonna move on to, I wanna make sure, I don't think I missed anybody. I think everybody was 14 and 17. Okay. So with that, we're gonna move on to the city manager's report.
Hey, your members of the commission, I'd like to introduce Jimmy Vargas. I saw Jimmy pop in somewhere in the crowd. Jimmy is our new Public Works Director. I think many of you know Jimmy. He's worked for the city for a long while and a variety of different functions, and so he's risen to the occasion and ready to go, so we officially started today. So be patient and work with Jimmy as he starts tackling street issues.
And congratulations, congratulations.
Start off, talk about, a little bit about the fire. We participate in the fire update at 11 o'clock every morning. As of this morning, there was 7,178 acres, 0% contained. There's 533 personnel involved in the pursuit, and to date, $5.1 million spent. Today, they expected a slight increase in humidity later tonight. Sunday, by Sunday, some elevated winds with moderate air quality. So we are actively working with King Industries to push through the fire management assistance grants that we might be able to qualify for, as well as the emergent, excuse me, the emergency declarations that the commission will ultimately approve, so that we can be in line for whatever federal funding, state funding that there may be. So we are actively doing that. Well, we'll have to have a special called meeting in order for you to approve those declarations, but we're working on that. On another item, the Parks Board came by and visited with me, our representatives from the Parks Board, and for those of you that may not know, we've had quite a bit of damage to our parks already this year. Already over $7,000 to $8,000 worth of damage since January. All kinds of things going on. Doors destroyed, LED, LED lights destroyed, graffiti removal, toilet dispensers busted to pieces. I don't know what, I assume it's kids, but we got a lot of damage going on. So we're trying to figure out some ways to try to mitigate that in terms of maybe some nighttime watch or whatever, but we really don't have a staff that can be dedicated to that purpose. And as you well know, that's in the parks. We've got the same type of damage going on all over town. So the police department is actively involved in all of these things, but they can only be where they can be at any given time. So I wanted you to be aware of that. I was also wanting to compliment and thank the Parks Department and the Parks Board for taking time to spend with me to share some of those issues with me, so that we can start working on some solutions to those. I've been inundated, as you might expect, with a number of items, some of which you'll be discussing a little bit later tonight. Another happens to be the golf course, and we have had some, some issues out there. I know I've sent you notes, but our staff is working diligently to get the reclaimed water into those ponds. We're looking and trying to get some, some mechanical equipment replaced with some automated, automated devices, transducers, to turn valves on and off. Right now, we've been averaging upwards to 1.2 million gallons of water per night that we're getting from the reclaim, from the reclaimed water, and so we're getting adequate water right now. The biggest part of the water issue is gonna be solved, and the problems are gonna be solved once we are able to install the new irrigation system, which through the assistance of Senator Griggs, we were able to get money this year. It won't be here for a while yet, but we do have the commitment from the governor's office to have enough money to completely redo the irrigation systems on both front and back nines. And so we will be able then to get, get those fairways watered appropriately and not have to be fighting with an old system. But right now, we are putting as much water as we can possibly put on it. We're turning valves on and off during the night until we get automated. But I, I walked a number of the holes last week myself, just to look, and, and I do see some, some greenery. We're gonna let folks continue to drive on the fairways, and they just have to understand if they're, if they're gonna do that, that they're gonna have a little trouble getting the grass to grow where it needs to. But we're gonna pour as much water as we can onto it and minimize the amount of interruption to the golfers as we can. I know it's important to, to grant, it's important to the golfers, it's, it's important to the community. So we will continue working on that. I'd like to thank the park staff again for the work they do, the golf course staff. Michael is an exceptional superintendent with a huge background in, in turf. And those of you that, most of you have lived here for a long, long time, know that we live in a desert, and the soil conditions out there are not ideal for grass to begin with. And we've done a lot of testing and determined some of the issues. The water is all reclaimed water, but you also know that we share that reclaimed water throughout the community. So once it goes to the Lavelle Lake, it splits, and part goes to the golf course, and part goes to the parks, the baseball fields, the other things that we like to keep looking well. I have asked Bendy to dial some of those down a little bit to assure that we have plenty of water at the golf course. The golf course is a revenue-producing entity, so we certainly need to try to keep it in as good a shape as possible. And during the summertime, it's, it's almost difficult to do it, but we're gonna continue. So that's all the specific items that I had for you tonight.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Commissioner Burnett, did you wanna start, or?
Yeah, that's fine. So I would like to say, first of all, thank you to the community for as much support as y'all have given, especially the police force, fire department, AMR, and the sheriff's office. With the quick response that they had was amazing. I'll give you a little story about what happened. So Daya was diagnosed with epilepsy about eight years ago. It's called absent seizures. So she was there, but she wasn't there. She was, she could, you could talk to her, ask her questions, but she couldn't answer you. And then over the last three months, she developed what they call tonic-clonic seizures. So basically, that's what caused her to stop breathing, her heart to stop, stuff like that. Two weeks ago, Monday, my wife went into her room and found her unresponsive. 911 was called. They performed CPR on her for 15 to 20 minutes, got her back. Got her to the hospital, airlifted her to El Paso, to the children's hospital. She was somewhat stable, not doing great. They did everything they could do for her. They were stumped. They, they had no idea what was going on. Tuesday morning, she passed. We got the autopsy back, and she, she succumbed to what they call SUEDEP. So it's sudden unexpected death and epilepsy. It's the same thing that infants do with SIDS. It's just, it's just in teenage kids. So I just wanted to clear the air. I had heard some rumors about what the cause was, but the cause was from SUEDEP.
So I'm gonna just say that I, I don't even know how you did it, but I, I'm gonna tell you this. These two, he and his wife, are two of the strongest people I know. I have children. I watched them through the memorial service. I watched them through the funeral, and I have such new admiration, because they showed strength in the, in, in the face of just an unimaginable, unimaginable time. And, and just know that I'm praying for you, my husband's praying for you. We, we pray for you every day, and that's not gonna stop. It's, I can't imagine what you're going through, but I know that through that, through that whole process, I really believe that God takes any bad situation and can turn it into something good. And I learned something. I learned something about your daughter, but I also learned something about her condition, and I've done a lot of studying on it, and it's good to know. My husband has two brothers that had epilepsy, and, and they're older, and I said, "Did you ever know about?" And he said, "We've never heard of this before." And so we all learned something new through this, and you don't know now that, that through her story, that it could save a life. And a parent can become more aware. And so, so thank you for that. Thank you for sharing her with us. She, she really was an amazing young woman, and beautiful inside and out, truly, and, and so thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a pretty rare condition. About 1 in 4,000 children succumb to it.
Yeah.
So it's a, I mean, for the, for the, even the fact that they were able to revive her, it's about 1 in a million. So it was, I mean-
And it just gave you that time.
It gave us enough time, the family, friends, to give the proper goodbye to her. Even though she never came to, she, she held on for 16 hours.
She was beautiful. She was just in the play, Children's Music Theater. And I remember seeing her up there. She was the knife. For those of you who saw it, if you didn't see it, you missed a really great show. But she was the knife, and that's all I had to say to my, my daughters. They said, "Which one was she?" I said, "She was the knife," and they knew exactly who she was, honestly. So thank you for that, and thank you for being willing to share that. I think it's important that the rumors stop. There's too many in this town, so that's, that's one that we can put to rest. Does anybody else have anything that they wanna share? Okay. All right, well, I have been-
I got one real quick, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
My mind's spinning, 'cause I have something else going on. The, the water line that runs parallel to the highway to Walker, can we maybe get staff start looking at what it'd run to replace that? They redid from where it broke Saturday morning to around the corner, past the new truck stop, but it, it really seems like it's a, almost a weekly thing out there, that those people don't have water. And, you know, if we can just start kinda working on the design or getting the ball rolling on that, it's kinda on, almost not fair. And then I don't know if we're gonna have a tort claim. Some poor guy ran his car into that sinkhole that was created from this latest break Saturday morning early, so.
I'm aware that there are a lot of issues out there, and a lot of the things that are part of our capital improvements plan are included in, in some of the things that need to be done out there in general. It's not just that line, but that is one of them.
Yeah, we've had, what, 15 probably breaks in the last year and a half right there in that area.
Been at least four or so since I've been here, so I know today it was running out again, so.
I think that was further down the road at Amber Skies.
Yeah, that's-
That's in their park. That's not on our side, so.
Right, but still, it's, there's a lot of water issues out there, and whenever you have a big issue, as you well know, some of those folks were out during the day over the weekend. So, so yes, those are, those are part of our plan.
They were out overnight from Friday to Saturday morning early, so. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I know Commissioner Paul was there. We attended a memorial out on base. I have to tell you, it was very humbling. There were two Gold Star families there on Thursday afternoon, and it was very humbling to be a part of that. I also attended the change of command out at the base. Lot going on at the base right now. And then this weekend coming up is the airshow. So for those of you who haven't heard, I'm sure everybody has, but if you haven't heard, the airshow is on Sunday. There's a pre-air show on Saturday at, it's Washington Park, right? At Washington Park. Meet the Thunderbirds, I believe it is, or something like that, so that should be really good. And then Monday, they are presenting us with the Altus Award. So if you haven't seen it across 10th Street, thank you, PNM. I know Wilson's here. Thank you, PNM, for putting that banner up for us, talking about the Altus Award. So that'll be on Monday, and I think, that's all I have. So, anybody have anything else? No? Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything? They would like to, I think you said number nine. Is there anybody else?
Number five.
Number five and number nine?
Wait, yeah, yeah, number five.
Number five.
Yeah, I just had a question.
Okay, okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items, number, or minus agenda item five and nine? Motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second? A second from Commissioner Robinson? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero. We'll move on to items pulled from the consent agenda. Item five, I believe Commissioner Reardon pulled that one?
Yeah, I just had a constituent ask me if we do salvage that aircraft, and, or not salvage it, but I guess salvage it, yeah, and haul it off. Are we gonna replace it with another existing aircraft we have as a static display, or?
Troy, I don't think there's any, anything in life that is-
No, sir.
No, if it's salvaged, it, it will, it will leave, and there's not a replacement aircraft planned at this point.
I was told that there's two of those that are in flyable condition, sitting in a hangar out there, those P2Bs.
We're, I'm not aware, I don't think Troy's been made aware that there's anything to, to go there.
There is no plan, no. Those, those still belong to Neptune Aviation.
You'll have to come up, sorry.
Okay.
We need you in the mic and on the record. Okay, go ahead.
As of right now, those two aircraft belong to Neptune Aviation Services. They're the fire services that originally owned them, and they, they are not on the docket, so to speak, to give to the, the city.
That'll work.
Anybody have any more questions while he's up here? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Is there anything else on that, or? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve item five?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2024-28.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Tapley. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero. We're gonna move on to item nine, consider and act upon the award of RFP 2024. This was pulled from the consent agenda, and Commissioner Burnett had a question on that?
Yeah, over the last couple of years, we've had a couple of, I guess, bills that haven't been paid. We've written them off from Mesa Verde. I believe there's a water bill and something else.
I think everyone's familiar with that. I think y'all asked about that once before, at a previous meeting.
Yes, so three years ago, we did have a write-off for Mesa Verde for a kiosk meter that was maybe not returned, was returned, was returned with a reading, and so the city manager at the time chose not to pursue it and chose to include it as the write-offs.
So they don't know if it was their water bill, or?
Yeah, so with those kiosk meters, they're supposed to be, the readings are supposed to be turned in every month, and that's kinda hit or miss, which is something you'll see on our ordinance coming up here. And so when that one did, 'cause initially it was reported as lost, and it came back, and it did have a very large reading on it, but there was also some controversy about that it maybe didn't start at the reading we thought it did. It just got really mucky, and like I said, the city manager at the time made the decision to not pursue it.
All right. I just wondered, 'cause it's kinda hard to award them a contract when they don't pay the bills.
They, they currently don't have any unpaid bills on the current.
I got a quick question on that. What's the dollar amount on this contract? There's no, in our agenda report, there's nothing.
So it's, um-
It's on call?
It's on call. It's budgeted up to $300,000 out of Fund 109.
And then are we planning on contracting with them to get us caught up, or, or just on, on call as needed?
Yeah, so the idea is, the idea when it first came about was to do as many as possible with the amount. Nancy Bachelor took it to the engineers and said, "Okay, we felt comfortable with the amount of $300,000 based on what the fund balance was." She took it to the engineers. They looked at the amount of backlog that they had at the time. They said that $300,000 would be able to do the backlog that they had at the time. But this was a while ago, so, I mean, obviously, it could get everything that's a backlog, but it could also not get everything that's a backlog.
Will city staff be working on them as well, or?
I believe that's the plan.
Yes, the city staff will be working on this, and this was done, I know the first part of it was done before I ever got here. So the plan was for a contractor to come in and assist and subsidize our group so that they could try to catch up. Those of you sitting in the audience will already know that there's holes everywhere, and the guys literally can't keep up. And they're working diligently, but, and of course Jimmy's jumped in today, so he's gonna be involved with it, but we're gonna count on Mesa Verde to help pick up some of that slack. And I know from experience that asphalt repair is a lot more expensive than most people think it is, and you don't get as many holes fixed as you think you can fix for $300,000. It, it won't go long.
Is the backlog, I've been hearing, close to 500?
There's probably at least that many. I, I've seen at least that many. We do have a new map that our GIS group has put together within the last week that actually lays those out in a nice sequence where you can see exactly where they're at, and as they're repaired, they will color code and go off the list, so probably by next month, if things go well, we'll be able to kinda show you- So, probably by next month, if things go well, we'll be able to kind of show you some snapshots of that to let you see how many actual holes are getting fixed and where they're at. You can see the concentrations and know where they're at, but they're scattered all over town.
They're everywhere, every road you drive on.
And also, to be clear, this was done as a one-time, because it's coming out of 109. It needs to be a one-time capital project. It cannot be a continuous, because then it starts falling into the operations, and 109 is not designated for operations.
So, it's a $300,000 contract and that's it?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to approve item nine?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who was that? A second from Commissioner Reardon. All those in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and motion passes seven zero. Okay, we are gonna move on to new business, item 14. I do have several people signed up to speak. I'm gonna start with, yes. But what I was gonna say, yes, I'm gonna start with our airport manager. But what I was going to say was, we have several people signed up to speak. It is three minutes each. Due to the sheer volume, and, yeah, due to the sheer volume, not just the sheer volume, but due to the sheer volume, I really am gonna have to keep that to three minutes each. There will be a timer, and I will let you finish your sentence if it's after three minutes, but after that, I'm gonna have to cut you off. So, please don't yell at me, I'm sorry. Oh, and that's the other thing, if we can just, this is a very passionate topic, and I understand that for a lot of people, but I really do believe in showing some decorum. So, if we can all just let cool heads prevail, I would appreciate that very much. Then I don't, I don't have to, to cut you off. So, with that, we're gonna start with our airport manager. He has some information for us, and then we will start with our first.
Mayor and Commissioner, before Troy starts, let me, let me just throw in a couple of things. First of all, when I first came here, I never knew that I was gonna have so much fun in such a short period of time with such issues.
I did warn you, I did.
I don't know, but I, I want you to know, and I want the, the audience to know this, because this is, this is not some arbitrary thing that has just arisen out of the ashes. Back in 2022, during the city's fiscal year audit, there were audit fighting, findings that specifically addressed leases and property values and fair market values and some things that the city was actually written up for in the audit. And so, during that time and between then and now, you're quite aware that a lot of the city facilities and the things that we have, we're having to charge rent on a lot of things that maybe we didn't always charge rent for before, and those rents are significantly higher because they're based on fair market value. So, while that happened, it applies to the airport leases as well. Every property that the city owns is subject to these situations. Again, tonight, we're not gonna actually talk about specific rates. The commission does have and will have, when we get to the point for, for the numbers, you will have the opportunity to take into account some of the local economic development, economic factors and things that affect Almagordo that may not affect somebody else. So, you'll have leeway and opportunity to negotiate the rates so that we come up with rates that are fair for everybody. No, nobody likes rate increases. I don't care what kind it is, and we've got more than one increase, as you well know, based on the agenda tonight. But listen to the presentations, certainly we're aware of the, the opposition. I, I fully get that. But understand that there are some things we have to do as a business. We're running a business, and so the leases are part of that business, and Troy's gonna explain a little bit more detail to you about that.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Commissioners. I do wanna make some house, or housekeeping before we get started. The text in the proposed ordinance is listed as 1661. The correct ordinance number is 1698. We will make sure to get that updated before the, the final go-around. To give you some background, as to what we are proposing tonight, some of the rates and fees that are, that we deal with at the airport are posted in the Code of Ordinances under Chapter Four, that deals with the airport specifically. And this is limited to things such as parking rates, landing fees, and fuel flowage rates. The rest of the fees, such as our leases, have historically been determined by the airport manager. The problem with that is nothing authorizes the, the airport manager to do that, whether it's Chapter Four, the Code of Ordinances, or the minimum standards. In fact, the, the leases under Article 4B specifies that the amount of rent shall be at the rate specified by the city commission per square foot per year by ordinance. And so, that is part of what we're doing here. All those documents, the, the Code ordinances, the minimum standards, they direct me as the airport manager to review the rates and fees and propose change to the city manager and the city commission, and that's ultimately what I'm doing here tonight. We do not have a current rates and fees document. And without a published rates and fees document, it can be difficult for tenants at the airport, somebody who is looking to fly into the airport, somebody who's looking to rent space at the airport. It can be hard for them to tell what they can expect. And so, I am working on publishing said document. The intent is to combine all the rates and fees from Chapter Four of the Code of Ordinances with our in-house rates and fees into a single document. And then, that can be updated by ordinance on a regular schedule, either one, three, or five years, as determined by the commission. I have attached a, a sample rates and fees to the ordinance. That is by no means intended to be final, obviously. And as Mr. Holden said, it is imperative that you get a chance to look at it, and we have a, we have the opportunity to figure out what, what the, the best rates are for the airport. Obviously, the first step is to remove the conflicting language from the Code of Ordinances, and that's what we're talking about tonight. My proposed amendments remove all mention of specific rates, and they, and in addition, adds paragraph K, which simply refers the reader to the rates and fees document. And then, we can publish that document on our website where anybody can review it and see what the current rates are. Once that is approved, or once this stage is approved, we will submit a new rates and fees document for your review on the 25th of June. And, and that's, that's really what we're here to do right now. So, do any of you have questions for me?
Got a couple.
Yes.
Okay.
The, why would we go ahead and amend the ordinance and take all of the existing fees and stuff out before we have this rate sheet? Because you said this was just a example of what we're gonna do?
So, the rates and fee sheet is, is an example, yes. I basically, I based it off of Las Cruces Airport, just in terms of formatting. But we have to, we have to remove the old language before we add new language so that we don't have conflicting language in the legal documents.
So, we're gonna have this same ordinance back in 30 days to amend it and put this rate sheet in there?
In 30 days, we'll, we'll bring you the finalized version of the ordinances for final approval. And then, at the same time, we will propose the, the new rates and fees documents, and then you'll have 30 days, as, as normal, to review that.
But the, the rates and fees document will not be part of the ordinance.
No, it will be its own separate entity. That way, as, as things stand right now, if anything changes within those rates and fees, we have to amend the entire ordinance.
Which I don't have a problem with, because it gives the public more time to review it and look at it, because then it has two readings. If we do it by resolution, then it's just the one vote and it's done. So, is that what we're proposing, is to put it as a resolution? That where the rates can be changed by resolution or by ordinance?
It, per, per the language in the ordinance and the leases, it has to be done by ordinance.
Yeah, I personally would like to see the rate sheet just in the ordinance, and if we gotta change it, it takes about 45 days. But I also wanna get some clarification, because I think what's got everybody in uproar is the, the land leases that their current hangars are setting on. What will be the rate? This right here states 15 cents for unimproved land per square foot per year. Is that rate going to go to $1.50?
15 cents per square foot per year is for land leases. That is for unimproved land, intended to be used with new hangar development.
So, all of the existing hangars will be charged at what rate?
Currently, 15 cents per square foot.
After the new rates?
As, after the new resolution, or after the new ordinance is passed and finalized. The intent is to change existing leases as the land lease expires at the 20-year mark, is to change them over to a aeronautical lease and charge an increased rate. Like I said, the, the dollar and 50 cent per, per square foot per year is a theoretical maximum and is not meant to be taken at face value as we stand right today. Sure.
Evening, Mayor, Commission, City Managers. So, you're, you're gonna see this exact structure on our water rate structure, our water rate item coming up. We have to amend the ordinance, the wording in it, before we can bring any proposed rates to you. So, you're gonna see this in the next item, in the next couple of items coming up as well. The proposed rate is not set. That's for you to discuss. And between now and the 6/20/25, as the next meeting will bring this in, we will have different rates for you to approve, from the max that 12.5, 12 and a half cents per square foot per month, to something to, all the way down. So, that's gonna be something that you need to approve, with keeping in mind that these will not take effect as of the reading. It will be as the leases expire. So, we only have one right now pending that's already expired. The next ones that it will affect will be in 2026. So, even though we're proposing this now, it's not gonna affect everybody immediately, so.
What's the reason for the large increase, you know, based off of this? Goes from 15 cents to a buck 50 when the leases expire?
That's a proposal, because that was based off of lots of different variables as far as Las Cruces's rates, neighboring airports' rates. That's a, that's a max, an absolute maximum that we would be able to charge, considering the economic dynamics of the city of Almagordo. That's the maximum. We know that that's probably not what the city commission will probably approve, but we wanna give you, here's the maximum, and then here's the various options. You will get those options at the 6/25 meeting, and that's when you will set what those rates will be.
Have any kind of an idea of what they may be?
As far as the rates, we have, we have about 10 different rates that we can deny. I just wanna.
This document that's in the agenda book.
It's what the fee structure is gonna look like.
Huge uproar. I understand that's, that's.
It has, and, and we're well aware of that. But we also have to acknowledge that if we want any change in economic development as a whole, that we need to move towards a fair market value on some of these leases. Everybody wants development, nobody really wants that change to occur. Now, I'm not saying that we're going at the 12 and a half cents, but I'm saying we do need to change the lease rates. We have to go from land rates to aeronautical rates if we wanna be in any kind of, to position the city of Almagordo to be any, have any economic impact.
Okay.
Got one more question.
Okay.
Absolutely.
In the event, you know, that we do do the increase, what's the extra revenue going to be used for?
There's not extra revenue.
There's no extra.
We subsidize the airport. We lose about 200,000. So, you're asking the citizens of Almagordo to subsidize 200,000 for 31 leases, for 31 people.
When I came in and.
Because you're considering grants and that. If you take out grants that are specific for, specific projects, the city of Almagordo loses money.
Transfers in for 23 were $50,943. 24 was to 16.5. And for the proposed budget for 25, it was 170,000.
Transfer in, look at the transfers out.
I'll have to look at those again, but that's what we supplement.
And we've been looking at this heavily. So, I just, I, I wanna make it very clear, we subsid, we, operations for basic maintenance of the airport, just maintenance, and that's not any special projects. That's Troy and Roger out there, you know, we did maybe change some lines, doing the basic maintenance is $250,000 just for that. We transfer in more money. Because you're talking about salaries, benefits, operational costs that, you know, that we have basic operations. We lose money on the airport. Now, we're not, that's, that's a fact. And there's 30, and I just, keep in mind, we have a citizenship of 31,000 people, and we have 31 people using airport hangars.
I'm just looking at the. You know, I'm just basing this on a, say they have a 4,000 square foot hangar out there, so they're leasing 4,000 square feet at the current rate of 15 cents. According to this, where they're paying $600 a year. Under that new rate, they're gonna be paying 6,000.
That's, that's.
That seems excessive.
Well, that's a, that's not.
It just seems excessive.
We've got 10 different.
We have 12 cents, and we go all the way down to where we're still losing money. And that's gonna have to, that's gonna have to be a policy decision that the commission's gonna have to make. Do we really need to elevate this airport to an economic driver, or are we gonna do status quo? And I, I'm, I'm sorry to put it so, I'm usually the optimistic one in the bunch, but that, at, at the end of the day, that's the commission's decision.
We do need to remember that government is nonprofit.
And, and we're not trying to be profitable.
We need to collect enough fees to cover the cost of the services we provide.
Yes.
We don't need to make money out of it.
I don't.
Nobody's trying to make money.
This document is what's got everybody heated.
I understand that.
This potential rate increase is what's got everybody heated.
I understand that, but.
And, you know, this may not be what's in the ordinance or orders passed down the road, but this is what's got everybody heated.
Right, and I'm gonna let everybody speak, but I will say this. It's 30, how many, how many leases out there?
We have 38 leases and 31 individuals.
I was wrong, okay, so it's 38 leases. We have to do some kind of compromise. I think it's, I think that it's a bit disingenuous of us to, to do status quo, like we've done for, I'm not, I'm not trying to take anybody's money, I got it, but it benefits a few. Does it benefit the whole? I think that's what, at least we need to listen to. At least we need to listen to it and look at it and give it a critical look. It doesn't mean that we're out to get everybody's money, but staff put a lot of thought into this, and, and there was a rates, not a rates, well, there was a study done of the entire airport, and.
How come we haven't seen the study? For us to look at?
We are doing, we're in the middle of a master plan, and I'm not sure Commissioner, Mayor is speaking of our appraisals? Is that what, or the master plan?
The, the. Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes. So, I, I think that we just need to listen to what everybody has to say.
Basing the rates off of the appraisals of the land out there, or?
They already are, sir. The 15 cents per square foot for undeveloped land is based on the 2023 fair market value assessment. And that's what it established, fair market value was, was 15 cents a square foot.
For raw land.
And that is for undeveloped land, not for land with a hangar on it.
Is that on the monthly basis?
Not, can't, sorry, sorry, I can't let you do that. If you hold on, if you've signed up, I'll let you speak in just a minute.
Technically, when them people leased the land, it was undeveloped, and they upgraded and put the hangar on.
And just to be clear, we're not coming at, at this from our perspective. We are calling in the consultants, we have spoken to FAA. We're looking at the grant assurances that the FAA put in. We're not coming at this and say, hey, we wanna make money off the airport. That's not at all what we're coming for. We're trying to improve the airport, we're trying to make necessary improvements, but the improvements to an airport are millions of dollars. And even if we're gonna say the, they put a 95.5 match, that's still a lot of money for the city of Almagordo, and we're already losing money and subsidizing it. So, now you're asking us to double that subsidy. So, we're coming at this at a purely, in the best interest of the city of Almagordo.
Can I ask a question, Stephanie?
Yes, sir.
Just because I'm, I'm not really caught up on this, but I was kinda told that the aeronautical lease, that is kind of a lease based off of the city actually owning the structure and doing all the maintenance on the structure?
I am gonna allow Troy, because he knows a lot more about aeronautical than I. Commissioner Tapley.
What I understand on the land leases, these guys have spent lots of money to build these buildings on just the raw land. And they maintain it. So can you explain that to me?
So there are multiple types of leases. Hangar leases are their, their own or facility leases, whatever. And yes, those would refer to hangars owned by the city, which we don't have any. We currently do not own any hangars. Aeronautical leases are leases that do not have new hangars on them where that, that initial lease period has expired. And the intent, per the FAA, is that the, that initial lease period can, based or should be based on a fair market value for unimproved land. And then once that expires, it is up to the city to determine what a fair rate is. And so the, the city can decide whether twelve and a half cents per square foot per month is fair or if, if fifteen cents a square foot for, for all hangars is fair. That is, that is ultimately up for the city commissioners to decide.
So basically what the contract says is after twenty years, the city owns the building?
Yes, actually. Per the lease, per the lease, per, per the lease, at the, at the expiration of a land lease, the, the city has the option to revert that property and any improvements on it to, back to the airport sponsor. In this case, it would be the city of Almagordo. I can tell you currently, we are not looking at reverting any, any property just for the sake of revert, reversion. It's only myself and one other person out there. And so any reversions that we were to undertake would require us to maintain them. They would require the city of Almagordo to pay for repairs and upkeep and all that. And we just don't have the time or personnel at this, at the moment.
We have to pay them fair market value for their building when we...
We do not.
Back to it?
Per the lease, the, all improvements on the parcel belong to the city. It would be a like, it's a little bit like a net, net, net lease in a commercial building. If you enter into a commercial lease under net, net, net terms, any, any modifications that you do to that building when your lease expires don't belong to you anymore. They belong to the building owner unless you, at your own expense, remove the improvements. And so it's, it's very similar in, in commercial terms.
So who's to say these guys can't just go take their hangars down when their lease expires?
Say that again?
Who's to say that they can't? When their lease is fixing to expire, they could just take their buildings down?
Absolutely, they can. And that is in the lease. There are provisions in the lease for if the city chooses not to revert the improvements, then the, the lessee is expected to return the parcel to the city in the condition that it was received in. Once again, we are not currently looking at doing any of that.
How many, you said there's one lease right now that's going to be affected by this, but how many more years do we have before every lease out there is affected by this?
At the very minimum, the, the majority of them expire in 2032. But even then, there are a couple of hangars that have ten-year options on them even after that expiration.
Additional ten years? Okay, so we're looking between ten and twenty years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do have one question since we've decided we're going to ask questions now. How many of those, you said thirty-one?
So we have thirty-eight leases that are...
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight actively leasing.
So that's thirty-eight hangars that are being leased or that are, thirty-eight hangars that are owned by thirty-one people?
Yes.
Thirty-eight hangars owned by thirty-one people. How many of those hangars actually store aircraft?
The vast majority of them. There are a few that may or may not. That is, that is hearsay. I have not been able to put foot in hangars yet, so...
And is that because you haven't been allowed entry?
Not currently, no. It's just some, I have been working on other things as opposed to hanger inspections.
Okay. All right.
Got one more quick question with long leases. The, the hangars with Neptune? Where are they at on their lease? How many years?
Uh, hang, Neptune's expires in 2032.
So they've got about almost eight years left?
Yes.
What kind of a, well, like I say, we don't know until we get the official rates adopted, but, okay. Because that would be a huge, they've got a lot of area out there.
Yes, it is, it is the, the largest single hangar that we have. We have some other hangars that have larger square footage, but that does, that is the entire parcel, not just the hangar. The parcel square footage on Neptune is sixty-five thousand square feet.
That's a very needed service out there, especially right now.
Well, Neptune is not, Neptune is not actively using that hangar. They're using it for storage of the, of the decommissioned P2Bs. Now, they may choose to reuse, utilize the hangar at some point in the future, but currently there has not been any, any new activity in that hangar in about five years.
Any more? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment because we do have a lot of it. Just one more reminder, you do get three minutes. Okay? And we're going to start with Rick Carrier.
Mayor, Commissioners, Rick Carrier, I'm the hangar owner at the, at the airport. I recommend you disapprove the new rate and fees sheet. The new aeronautical lease rate at the top of the page is preposterous. And by the way, it doesn't say maximum on it. A dollar fifty per square foot will result in a tenfold increase in hangar lease rates. According to the airport manager, this rate will be applied at termination of present leases, some of which will terminate in the near future or already have. If the hangar owner refuses to pay the increased rate, he had, his only option is to allow his hangar to revert to city ownership or tear down the hangar. Some, including myself, will elect to tear down their hangars. This will result in negative growth for the airport. At present, the growth, the growth rate at the airport is minuscule. We recently completed the first new hangar to be built in the last ten years. If these rates were in effect at that time, we would have canceled the project. Nobody will consider building a new hangar under this rate structure. There's been a lot of talk at the city level of fair market value. The FAA, as cited in the decision in favor of the city in two thousand and five, in the case of airport manager Rudy Clark versus the city, states they recognize hangar lease rates are predominantly below fair market value. They also state there is no requirement by the FAA for airports to be self-sustaining. The airport provides an important service to the city and the county and to residents like myself. Let's all work together to come up with a reasonable and fair lease rates in terms that are agreeable to all parties. Thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, next we have John Harris.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. Mr. Burnett, I didn't know about your recent loss. I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry for it. I've listened to Mr. Orr's presentation and it would appear that he's wanting to do away with a fifty-year program to assess these hangars and the land they're sitting on. And he wants to abolish that and put himself and maybe one other city employee in charge of a new revenue generating juggernaut that will answer all of our problems. Except for this gallery, they all have a bit of a problem with it, obviously. Why don't they tie the hangar increases to the CPI, the Computer Price Index? That's used for just about everything throughout economics currently today. It's used for adjusting our social security amounts. It's used for federal retirement. It's used in union negotiations. State property taxes draw from the CPI. And they're capped, I believe, at three percent in New Mexico. Employee raises, business rents, everything generally, economic, of an economic nature will be driven by the CPI, the Computer Price Index. It consists of thirteen percent of it is food prices, seven percent of it is energy prices, and the other eighty percent is distributed through eighty thousand separate goods and services throughout the country. It's a pretty accurate estimate, to say the least. Why can't we peg these leases? And they generally run two to three percent, which is what mine have been running at my hangar. It's, I don't know if it's an accident or maybe somebody has discovered that this is a reasonable way to assess increases. And I'll leave you with that thought. CPI could well be the answer. And then we don't concentrate the power of, of this rate setting in the hands of a few zealous people that think it's the answer to ten times increase our rates. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Jim Talbert.
Mayor Payne, Mayor Proton McDonald on the phone. City Commissioners, I'm Jim Talbert. I was former city commissioner, airport board member for seven years, chairman, local business owner, and I served as the airport manager for nine years. And I'll tell you, I never set those lease rates. That is not, was not part of my responsibility. That may have changed in the years since I've been gone. But I do have responsibility partially for three hangars at the airport. And I very strongly oppose this whole idea. And Commissioner Burnett, I do want to extend my condolences to the loss of your daughter. I've had a similar loss in the very near recent, I know of that.
Thank you.
But I'm not going to repeat what these guys said. But I will say this, we have used the CPI for the, my whole term, ten years ago, we've used the CPI to determine how much we increased the rates by. So every hangar lease was CPI increased. So some of them may be very, because they start at one rate and then every year they have CPI raises it. So we're already doing that. We're already increasing the rates as it goes. Even major airports do not make money. Airports have never really made money. Major airport hubs make money by parking. That's why you pay fifteen dollars a day for your parking and that's what that's for. Okay, something I want to bring up that's not on my list here. Tonight, I've heard two very critical issues of why our airport is incredibly important. Medevac. Every day, we have medevac airplanes come in. So yes, it affords more than the thirty-eight people that have leases. Medevac. How about forest fires? Have you been out there watching how often those airplanes are flying this morning? Today, yesterday? Because we provide service. And Mayor Vriadosa last year, when we had that Gatlin Canyon fire, came down and said, we saved this city. Our airport saved that city. So add those people to the list of people that the airport benefits. Okay. When I was airport manager, I came up with a whole list of ways to generate revenue off the airport, not from leases. Every one of those was turned down. The city did not want to do that. The city did not want to build hangars. The city did not want to build shade hangars. So the whole thing, we got to look at unintended consequences. Yeah, you're going to bankrupt a bunch of folks out there. One of the proposals that is requires the FBO to collect the fees. That's going to cost them money. And why should they have to pay money to collect fees that the city should collect? And also, my last point is, there are fees out there right now the city is not collecting because they just, I don't know why. I collected them, but the group here is not collecting them. And that money is going, not being collected. Money not being gone. Thank you.
Thank you. You can clap, it's okay, I don't mind. All right. Next, one of my favorite musicians, Mr. Robert Hicks. Kind of an inside joke, he really is a musician, honest. Among other things.
Thank you for this opportunity to, to speak to you. I'm Rob Hicks. Like many people in this town, I came here with the Air Force and then I retired from the Air Force here and decided to stay in part because of the vibrant and lively aviation community we have here in Almagordo. The city has a special partnership with the Federal Aviation Administration and private investors in managing this airport. The FAA provides ninety, ninety-five percent of the funds to maintain the runways, taxiways and ramps. The city owns the land and manages the aviation use of the land. Private investors lease the bare land from the airport, then spend tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars to build, operate and maintain hangars and maintenance facilities at the airport. Nearly all the buildings at the airport were built with private funds, not city funds. The city provides long-term leases to, to those hangar builder and owners and the city manages the airport and assures the FAA that those hangars are being used for aviation purposes. As you can tell, there are two topics that are guaranteed to upset private citizen partners of the airport. Either talk of raising the lease rates well above some reasonable rate of inflation and talk of not renewing leases and seizing privately built hangars. The city's looking for ways of, of increasing revenue. There are many other ways to increase revenue out at the airport without threatening exorbitant lease rate increases or threatening to not renew leases and revert or seize those private property hangars. Remember John Marshall's motto, "The power to tax is the power to destroy." And if the city threatens to raise lease rates excessively or not renew leases in order to confiscate private property, then private investment in the airport will dry up immediately. No new hangars will be built. Existing hangars will not be properly maintained. You know, we, we don't want to be there. I recommend that the city commission send the rates and fees document back to the city manager and task him to work with the commission's airport advisory board to come up with a plan that will better reflect the city's plans for an active and self-sustaining airport. A better thought-out solution will encourage our private citizen partners to keep investing in the airport. We will then know that, that our city partners honor and support our citizen partners and their investments in the airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have, is it Jacqueline Alexander? Oh. It's nice to meet you in person. I know who you are now.
Oh.
Okay.
I apologize for sitting down. I have some mobility issues and I can't get around as much.
That's all right, that's okay. You'll just state your name for the record, sorry.
I'd like to thank you all for, first, for welcoming us to make comment on this proposed ordinance. My name is Jackie Deal Alexander. My parents and my sister and I have owned two hangars out at Almagordo White Sands Regional Airport now for almost forty years, over forty years. In that timeframe, we've enjoyed quiet enjoyment of those facilities so that we could park our airplanes inside said hangars. We've also restored a nineteen forty-two German Messerschmitt out at the White Sands Regional Airport that was restored to flying condition. And it was a very rare aircraft. In March of this year, I was presented a letter from the city attorney through Troy Orr's office to vacate my hangar lease for one of my small hangars. During that timeframe, I was given thirty days as an eviction notice to remove my hangar and its contents from that parcel of land. When I explained to them that I had been waiting on a lease from the city of Almagordo for longer than eight months as my lease expired back last June, I was told, that's okay, we don't want to renew it. We have other plans for that property. You have thirty days. And of course, that caused my sister and I a great deal of anxiety. And of course, that caused my sister and I a great deal of anxiety in trying to get our lease stretched out, especially since we had been invoiced for an entire year's lease for the 23-24 administrative year by the city of Alamogordo, and had paid said lease last June. In dealing with this, I contacted the city attorney because my conversations with Mr. Orr were not only contentious, but they were unexcusably rude and non-desirable. Basically, I was told by Mr. Orr, "That's tough, we've got other plans for that property." When I questioned him on that plan of what the city had planned for that property, I was told, "You don't have a right to know." As a former news reporter for the Alamogordo Daily News and the Associated Press, I'm fully aware of what open government is all about. As such, I asked him again about what the plans were for that property. And he goes, "I don't have to tell you. You have 30 days." Thus, I contacted the city attorney. When I had conversations with Ashley in the city attorney's office, we went over the details of my lease and discovered that since I had paid for the lease up through 30th of June, that I was good till 30 June of this year, I no longer have that option. I'm still in, I am the leaseholder that is out of compliance, that doesn't have a lease. The rates that are presented are unjust, and I encourage you all to vote down this ordinance as it takes the power away from the commission and puts it in the hands of the city airport manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is a study, and I would encourage Mr. Paul, because I've spoken with him, to share that information with you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but I have to. Okay, we're going to move on. Mike Hames.
I have 10 hangars at the airport, and I've had them about 20, maybe a little over 20 years, I don't know. And I know what's, I have a sizable investment in purchasing those hangars. And I had, in purchasing those hangars, I took into consideration how much they would bring in. That's what businessmen do. And based on what it would bring in, I paid the price for the hangars, and have maintained them, and have had good relations for most of the time with the city. My lease at the beginning 20 years ago was probably $1,000 or $1,200 a year. That's based on the 12 or 13 cent per foot. I now pay $2,000 a year because the CPI has kicked in. As John Harris was trying to explain, my lease rate with the city has doubled, which I understand that. I understand inflation. And so, I, that's fine, I have no problem with it. But, based on what these people here, and I'm sure they're very, well, educated in business, but I get $200 a month for my rent, my hangars. I've got 10 of them. Based on their figures, I would have to raise the rate to about $700 to $800 a month. And people in my hangars, their airplanes aren't worth what a new pickup would cost. They can't afford it. They would leave. I wouldn't be able to rent them. I'm renting for two people from Las Cruces and from Ria Dosa, they buy their fuel here, and the city gets money from the fuel they buy because they can rent hangars here. The hangars are full, I have, I have three or four on a waiting list. And I think the Ravens have a waiting list. And the reason I have a waiting list is because nobody's building any more hangars because of the risk of that sort of thing happening. That's the way the free market works. And I'm just giving you the cold hard facts, if you want to turn that airport into a ghost town, landing fees, tie-up fees, and increase rates, vote for it, because that's what will happen. Thank you for letting me talk.
Okay, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How many hangars did you say you had out there?
10.
You have 10 hangars, and you were subleasing all of them?
Yes. No, no, I have 10 hangars, but they're in one building. They're separate-doored hangars.
And every one of those you're leasing out to someone else?
Correct. I'm not leasing them, I'm renting it to them.
Okay, you're renting it to them?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So you're leasing from the city, and, and I'm sorry, you're saying you're paying $2,000?
I, that's-
Is that for 10 hangars?
Correct.
So $2,000 a year for 10 hangars?
That's the lease, that's the land.
For the land.
Okay, for the land.
Yes.
$2,000 a year for the land, I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
And the lease, the hangars are ours. And I'm going to reiterate also what was said earlier, and that is, I have got a lot of investment in that, and when my lease is up, if anything near this comes by, I will take the hangars down-
Okay. All right, let me, okay. So you have 10 hangars. I'm, I'm sorry, I am not an airplane person, I do, I did do one tour of the airport, I, I just want to make sure I understand this. You have 10 hangars out there.
Correct.
And you're paying $2,000 a month, or $2,000 a year for the land for all 10. So you're basically paying $200 for each parcel of land? Am I saying that correctly?
No, the, the, the hangar building consists of about 15,000 square feet.
Okay.
There are 10 separate hangars in that one building.
And you're renting-
It's not an open building, they're all enclosed in, they're T-hangers.
And you're renting all of those out?
Yes. I have a waiting list. But there's a waiting list because nobody's going to build any more hangars because of the fear of what might happen with making it un-
And how long have you had them out there?
About 20 years.
Okay.
Well, thanks for letting me talk.
Wow, all right.
And if anybody has any questions, feel free to call me, I think they all know how to get ahold of me.
Okay, well, that's, that's a pretty good business you got there. That's impressive, all right.
Quite a few of those out there.
Anyway, well, you know, I'm learning.
Yeah.
I'm learning, okay.
They're just like a small, it's like a mini storage is almost what it is. It's, it's like 10 mini storages in one big building, and you can put 10 planes, but they're T-hangers. They're like a T shape. One plane goes this way, one that way, so.
Okay. I have a whole lot to say about that, but I'm not going to right now. All righty. Let's move on to our next, our next person is Kevin Dunshie. Can you say your last name for?
Dunshie.
Dunshie, so it's D-U-N-S-H-E-E, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, sorry.
My condolences.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to try to not say what has already been said, okay? I just want to bring a couple of points, or expound on some of the points that these hangars were all built with private money. Private individuals took the risk to put a building on the airport, which they maintained, which they basically upkeep, and the, they leased the land underneath it. All these private investors give value to this airport. So if you do a taking, their investment goes away. If you support possibly buying some of these buildings and then renting them out to your aeronautical activity and value, then the city could raise money. But what is fair market value? As soon as people start talking about land leases, guess what? They say, "Well, how much is this lease?" They spread it out over so many years, and they go, "Can I get my value out of this building that I just built?" And if the answer is no, they don't build. Right now, we've only had one built in the last 10 years because the numbers are that tight, okay? To build a brand-new hangar, just the concrete alone is amazingly expensive. So if you want the activity at the airport that this infrastructure brings, which is medevac, airline, cargo, firefighting, pilot training, it's a backup for the base for the Civil Air Patrol, we've got the Experimental Aircraft Association out there, there's a lot of activity this brings to the city of Alamogordo. It's just not a piece of concrete out there. But if you want to turn it into a piece of concrete, all you need to do is raise the value of that land lease, and people will stop investing in it. And just like Rick said, you know, he built a hangar, if you raise my land value to a point where I can't afford to maintain my activity there, I will leave. It's that simple. It's a dollar decision. It's a business decision, okay? It's not passionate, it's business. And if you kill the ability for us to have an airport where we can store airplanes and have activities out there, you're going to lose the airport.
I have one question.
Yes.
What's the average cost to build a hangar?
It depends on the size, but, you know, just a rough guess, you're looking $100,000 for concrete, and maybe about $300,000 to $400,000 for the metal.
Is that what it is now, or what it was back then?
That's what it is now.
Yeah, how much was it? Let's say, the last one was 2009, I think, is that?
It doesn't matter, it's still an investment that the person has to make.
Well, no, I'm curious, I, I'm not, I'm not challenging anything, I'm just curious what it was in 2009.
Like several people here, I've been here for several years, my leases, I'm now paying twice as much as what I used to pay. And that's just because of a 1% or 2% CPI increase.
Okay. So you don't, so how much was it in 2009, do you know?
I don't know.
I know everything is more expensive now, that's why I'm asking.
My hangar was built in 2007 at a cost of $150,000.
Okay. Yes, that does help me actually, thank you.
How many square feet? How many square feet was it?
2,500.
2,500 square feet for $150,000, so.
In 2007.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
And just to give you an idea, if you-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't, I, I do apologize, I really do, but I have people that really scrutinize these meetings, and if I let somebody do this, then I'm basically opening a can of worms, so I apologize. Okay, we're going to move on to our last one, Manny Gonzalez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, good evening Commissioners, I'm Manny Gonzalez with the Airport Advisory Board. I'm joined tonight with, by Rob Hicks, Lance Grace, and Jeff Raven, who also serve on this advisory board. My only input after listening to the proceedings tonight is to remind you, we are an advisory board, and the Airport Advisory Board stands ready to participate at a workshop or to in the month of June, assembled by staff and stakeholders and others that have a vested interest in this, to come up with some kind of idea about what is fair, the element of fairness. FAA regulations are subject to broad interpretation, and so we can't get locked down on just what the FAA, or what we think the FAA intends us to operate as an airport. I agree with most of what's said tonight, some of it I disagree with, but the Airport Advisory Board is prepared to participate to bring this matter to a proper conclusion. Thank you for your time and for your effort, Madam Mayor, Commissioners.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? I have some questions, but I'm going to see, anybody else have any? No, okay. Where's Stephanie? Where's Troy? Sorry, I have a few questions. Okay. I'm trying to understand this whole, this whole lease thing. I, I heard what you said, I heard what, I think it was Mr. Harris said, it was about the Consumer Price Index. And, and I get it, except that I, I don't know that, you know, we can raise it based on CPI every year, but if it didn't start out correctly, then, I mean, that's kind of open to interpretation too, right? I mean, if you start out at $50 a year and you raise it 3%, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that, that really works for me. I do know that we're going to obviously have to take a critical look at this, but can you, can you explain to me, or explain to everybody, how, how did we get to this place? How did we get started on this? I think we need to go back to those, to those leases, because I think, I feel like there's like an opinion that, you know, we're picking on the airport, and, and I don't, and I know that we're not. And so, I'm trying to understand how we got to this point.
Regarding what's-
And then if you could also address the, the, you know, do we have any other options? Are you going to give us other options, or, you know, other than just the increase? There's been some talk that, that there's other ways to generate revenue, have we looked at that? Maybe we need to at least, we have a month, obviously, but maybe we need to at least address that question.
Well, first, I do want to remind everyone that we're not here to talk about rates today.
I get it.
I can, I, I will definitely, I have no problem answering your questions.
But when it's in an agenda packet, let's be serious.
I know, I know, I know. So, we have historically increased the rates by a CPI every year. It was 5.1% in fiscal year '24, and it was 5.4% fiscal year '23. To my knowledge, those, those rates were not approved by an ordinance. The, but, so we have been increasing them by a, a margin every year, but those numbers are tied to inflation. And so, what we are doing is keeping somewhat in par with, with inflation rates and such. So, I don't know that we can really call that fair market value. The, the state of New Mexico directed the city in 2022 to perform a fair market value assessment. It was done in 2023, and that's what determined the 15-cent rate. And so, the intent was to, to set that as the rate for fiscal year '25, and then go on, you know, from that as a baseline. It also makes the rates more fair. People pay different cents per square foot based on when they got the initial lease, what the rates were at the time, and so, some people are paying significantly less than others in just broad senses of square footage. So, that, that's something else that this does, is it kind of levels the playing field for everybody. As far as how we got the dollar sign, the 12 and 1/2 cents came from just a basic breakdown of expenses over, or expenses and revenue brought into the city. And just so you know, just so you are tracking, grants aside, we bring in approximately $250,000 a year in, in total expenses. Like Stephanie said, that's mostly pay for the two employees, as well as general upkeep and maintenance of the facilities. That does not include actual working on the, the runways and stuff. Revenue, as far as revenue goes, the past three-year average was $163,000. And so, we're talking about a, an approximate $100,000 shortfall. And then on top of that, we have two leases that the city pays for at a total value of And so, that is more, that is more funding that we are in the hole for.
Okay, so what do you mean the city pays for two leases?
There are two, there are two leases at the airport that are sort of special cases that the city pays for. We, we are essentially renting them to ourselves for the, I don't know, bookkeeping of it. But ignoring those, I'm sorry, ignoring that, that's still a $100,000 shortfall approximately on, every year. We do not count, or we're not counting grants in that, in that calculation because, like Stephanie said-
Because those are specific.
Grants are very specific, they're very random as well, depending on what is happening at the airport, and so, it's, it's impossible to consider that. Another thing that I wanted to point out is that while FAA grants are, are an option, and, and state grants for that matter, are an option, the FAA only handles runways and taxiway surfaces, and to a lesser extent, aprons. That means that we have to rely on state funding for pretty much everything else, and those grants, as I'm, I'm sure you're aware, are very competitive- And those grants, as I'm sure you're aware, are very competitive. And we don't have the funds right now to really get into that kind of competitive field as much as we'd like.
Because are they typically a match or?
Usually, yes. And once again, it always depends on the grant and the grant source. FAA grants are 70 to 90% depending on what your project is. And then, of course, the state of New Mexico also tends to match depending on, once again, what the project is. But the city of Almagordo is still on the hook for that 1%. And when you're talking about a $3 million project, that's a lot of funding that the city has to come up with. And so we haven't been able to maintain the runway and the taxiway and the apron the way we, the way we need to. The apron is, there are bad spots in the apron where there are, the asphalt is sinking, and we don't have the ability to pay for those repairs. And so we are, we are trying to make do with a five-year plan, but this five-year plan is currently about 10 years old. And there has been very little progress made in terms of that goes. So and everything we want to do in terms of funding, or I should say, repairs, upgrades, maintenance, and upkeep, that all costs money that we don't have right now. The last thing I do want to point out that I have heard repeatedly is that we are trying to take power away from the commission. And I want to point out that that is the absolute opposite case. I am responsible for reviewing leases and fees, and I can recommend those changes to the board, but I do not have the authority to do, to make my own changes. I can, if I say that I want to, if I proposed the 12 and a half cents, you are well within your rights to tell me to kick rocks. I think we all agree that a much smaller number is more appropriate, but the, what that number, what that dollar amount is going to be has yet to be set.
Right. No, I get that. And I, you're just doing your job, and I appreciate that, so.
So to answer your question, yes, we are looking at every source of revenue. We are not just talking about leases. And we are in a actually fantastic position with our city manager who has successfully run an airport. And also, everything that we put, we're not here to make money. We're not trying to make a profit. Everything that comes in will be reinvested in, back into there. We can't even get the machine, machinery, equipment that we need to do some of the proper maintenance. We're not trying to make a profit. We're trying to elevate the, and level up the airport. That's what our overall goal is. And yes, we are looking at other revenue places. We're just not in a place that we can be a revenue generating entity. We need to make some upgrades, perhaps the city purchase some hangars, get some aeronautical businesses, non-aeronautical businesses. But we are in a perfect position to do that with city managers' background, knowledge, and experience.
Okay. Thank you. No, that answers the question. I think, I, you know, and I can't, I.
Commissioner Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Couple of questions. There's been a lot of talk going on, kind of, I think, in a bunch of different areas. So when I look at the agenda this evening, it's to consider and act upon the amendments to Chapter 4. And so help me just make sure that I'm clear in my thinking of this. What we're looking at before us is striking fees that are simply in Chapter 4. That's all that we're looking at this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The intent of this ordinance is to strike fees from Chapter 4, specifically Article 4-06. And that's where Chapter 4 lays out specific fees and conditions. For example, a single-engine aircraft is $20 for a monthly parking rate. And then that, that rate is published on the rates and fees document.
And so nowhere in Chapter 4-06, that's 060, does it address anything with aeronautical lease rates?
No, sir.
Land lease rates?
In fact, the ordinance itself does not cover leases at all. And which is, which is part of the problem is there, I can look at all of the history of all of our leases, and I have no idea how they came up with the dollar amount at the time. Whether it was based on a square footage, whether it was based on a rate that somebody else paid. And so that's, you know, when we're trying to run a business, that's not equitable at all.
And so, just so that I'm clear, so if, just hypothetically speaking, if this ordinance is approved this evening, this is simply going to allow us the opportunity to then consider what city staff brings in terms of rates, which would then be incorporated into this specific ordinance? Or it would be?
No, sir. It would be, it would be the separate rates and fee sheet.
Right.
Just for the rates and fee sheet.
Right. So the rates and fees will no longer be part of the ordinance?
So we will bring it to you through resolution for the commission to approve, and we will look at it on a, I think we said an annual or?
Either one year, three years, or five years.
To bring it in, bring it to commission for their approval. We will relook at that, but that will come on 6/25 for commission's approval, where you tell us that this is the rate we want.
Okay. And then so with that rate sheet being set, then we have the ability to determine, the sitting commission at the time, how frequently that needs to come back before the commission for review and for any approval to any of those rates.
So it will be put on the website as a resolution and the fee sheets so that there's no hidden costs. Everybody's going to know straight up what they're going to be paying for all the different services that are on this sheet.
Okay. And then just to be clear, one last question. The commission will be the ones that are ultimately responsible for approving any changes to the rate sheet.
Yes, because once you approve it through resolution, city staff does not have the authority to make any changes to that. It will have to come back to city commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And I, those were excellent questions. And I think probably the concern was that the way the agenda was printed, there was a potential rate sheet in there and that kind of thing. And I'm sure that, that got everybody concerned, and I understand that too. But just so you're, everybody's clear, we are not talking about, we're talking about rates, but we're not, we're not approving any kind of rate structure tonight. That'll be, that'll be a month, I guess, from now, basically a month from now. I just wanted to, to cover all of the concerns that were brought up tonight because I think, I think it's always good to have as much information as possible. None of this means that, that we're going to do something or we're going to do nothing. That's not what this means. It means that we have to consider all the facts. So I don't think I have any more questions.
I got one more. Commissioner Reardon. I honestly feel that the rates need to be a part of the ordinance and, because the ordinance takes two readings. You know, you have your first reading, then you wait your two weeks, and your second reading. And it gives the public more time to comprehend what it is we're actually doing. If we do it by resolution, a lot of times they get thrown on consent agenda that's done by one vote, nobody really pays a whole lot of attention to it. So I don't quite understand why we had this sheet in here in our agenda pack, because this is what's created all of the issues tonight. And I don't quite understand why we didn't have the rate structure that we're going to, I mean, obviously, you guys have probably already been working on it, of what we're going to be looking at. I mean, and then I don't quite understand why we're changing the ordinance before we know what these rates are going to be. You know what I mean? I'm just a little leery about that. I don't want to vote on this and then have this go into effect and we have no rates in the ordinance. I don't understand why we don't have it all as one package.
I think if you look at the ordinance and you look at the very last line, it says the fees referenced in paragraph B, C, D, and I are detailed in the rates and fees document.
But then the ordinance is already passed. In 30 days, this is already passed. And then we're almost forced to pass a resolution. I just don't understand why we're doing it that way.
But the resolution will be what you tell. If you tell us you want it exactly as it is, you're not forced, we're not forcing anything on you.
I mean, the resolution could be to keep it the way it is, I suppose.
And so also, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Reardon, where there's, it gives people more time. However, if you pass a resolution and there's pushback, resolutions, we can bring back at every meeting. There's no need to have a skip a meeting. There's no need. And this is generally how it's done.
Not in the past, not in Almagordo. Everything, all our rates have been in our ordinance.
There's a lot of things that we haven't done properly.
I think that's been part of the problem, actually, but.
It's depending on who you ask. But I just don't understand why we're changing the ordinance tonight when we don't know the rates that we're going to be putting in there.
Because you're going to give us the rates.
And I think that's, that's where the heat is on us, is because we don't know what these are going to be. So you're asking us to change the ordinance, but we don't know what this will be until 30 days from now.
But the, I'm, I guess I'm missing something because to me, the ordinance, the changes to the ordinance don't affect rates one way or the other.
They're taking all the rates out.
Well, they're taking them out, but they don't affect it one way or the other. I mean, we could leave it in, and it still may or may not affect it one way or the other.
So Commissioner Reardon, this does not, this as it sits, does not even address what we are debating today.
Why did we put it in the agenda pack?
That is our attempt to be transparent, the same as what you're going to see on the water rates. This is the structure that we're going to. This is what the fee sheet will look like. This is our attempt of what we're, that we're going to. And then come the 25th, that's when each of you gets to get, tell us, okay, we don't want it to be a $1.50 annual rate. We want it to be a dollar annual rate. We want it to, that's where, and then we will, you will approve the resolution as stated. And we can get you, we'll have a lot more information on rates. We'll have how much everybody's currently paying the square foot, how much they're, what they're paid 2024, what they pay, what they're projected to be billed for 2025. Here's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different options for you. Please let us know what you.
I would still personally feel more comfortable if the rates were part of the ordinance and not done by resolution.
Even though they're not currently part of it?
They kind of are.
Not the leases.
Not the least part of it, but it's.
The rates are not part of the ordinance currently. Not the, not the rates that everybody's concerned about.
You're going to also include other potential revenue streams? Yes, sir. If you look at, looking at the sample rates and fees, for example, I have included parking apron rented by an FBO or an SASO. We don't have either of those actively at the airport. But it gives us a spot in the future for if that becomes apparent or necessary. Same thing for, let's see, I don't have vehicle parking on here because we don't have vehicle parking, but we could add it in the future if we, if we needed vehicle parking. The intent, to answer your question as for why we added this, the intent was so that when we came to you with this ordinance, you would understand what our end goal is. Rather than just say that we want to publish a rates and fees sheet, well, what is that? Or a rates and fees document, other airports do this so that you have a quick, easily identifiable reference for all of your fees. And if I came to you with an ordinance and I did not provide a sample, then that gives, or there is a lack of context in regards to what it all means and why we're doing it. As far as why we did the ordinance first, that is just from a legal perspective so that we don't have conflicting language in two different legal documents.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
You're looking at a rate increase basically once a year, correct? One, three, or five?
It would be, it would be a review by the commission once, at least once a year.
Once a year.
It could be three years. It could be every five years. The intent is just to look at the economic situation and determine as a city commission whether the rates needed to go up or down or stay the same.
Okay. So about that, I'm trying to remember, when is the last time the commission actually reviewed a rate increase at the airport?
As far as I can tell, never. I looked at the old, I looked at all of the old city dockets back to like 2007. And as far as I can tell, unless it was, unless it used to be done differently, and I could be completely wrong, but as far as I can tell, there's never been an ordinance or a resolution proposed to the city to set lease rates.
Right. Yeah, I've been doing this eight years, and I don't ever remember seeing.
I don't think we have.
Nope, I don't think so either. Okay.
So when was the last time the rates were raised?
2020, this fiscal year.
The lease rates were changed by CPI.
Based on the Consumer Price Index, yeah.
Yep.
Is that right? On the Consumer Price Index, yeah.
And that's the case for quite some time, actually.
Okay. So, okay, all right. And up until this point, and I would have to go back and review this, was the commission supposed to approve that?
Yes, ma'am.
So the commission was supposed to approve it every year?
In the lease language of the current lease standard, which was published in 2006.
Okay. So that's a little problematic in itself.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is a big part of why we're doing this, is to protect the position of the airport manager as well as protect the city from potential issues.
Okay. Yeah. Well, all right then. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, so, I don't even know what agenda item it is, 14. Sorry.
It's the very first one.
Yeah, sorry. Do I have a motion to, it's, okay, let me just read this, just so we're clear. It's consider and act upon ordinance 1698 for first publication to amend Chapter 4, Article 4-06-060 of the Code of Ordinances concerning fees and conditions at the Almagordo White Sands Regional Airport. Do I have a motion to approve item 14? I knew that was going to happen. Okay. Oh, we're not done yet. You can clap away, but we're not done yet. Nobody asked me if I had a motion. Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve item 14? Okay, fine. I make a motion, we approve item 14. So I have a second.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Robinson. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
No.
Josh Reardon?
No.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes 5-2. Okay. We're going to move on to item 15. Consider and act upon resolution 2024-29 requesting interim approval from the local government division of the Department of Finance Administration to adopt the preliminary budget for 2024, 2025. And we'll wait for the room to clear.
Nobody ever wants to stay for the budget.
I know, right?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. So I bring in front of you today the preliminary FY25 budget. This is the same budget that we discussed at the budget hearings at the beginning of May. I also know that Maurice went ahead and emailed you the corrected budget book to handle the calculation errors that were not fixed. I did want to point out two things on this preliminary budget. We talked about it at the budget hearings, but I wanted to highlight them again because they were a little different than that initial budget book. The first one was we did have a position at the library that was not included in the preliminary budget. So what you have before you today fixes that, or what was emailed to you, because I think we actually have the wrong attachment on the agenda book. The second item is on the summary budget books for the budget hearing. We did not include electricity and phone service for Bonita Lake, for the dam area, which obviously we need to continue to have. So those were added. So those are the only two differences in the preliminary budget than what was in your preliminary budget books. But Maurice did include those in the corrections that he sent you after the hearings. So if you have any questions, we could talk about them.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions? No? All right.
Got one.
Oh.
My, my question in budget hearings on Fund 81, the $3 million difference. Where, where are we making that up? Where we go from 10 million last year, I think it was, this doesn't show it, but our budget books did, to the 13 million. Where's that additional 3 million worth of revenue coming from?
So that was what we were talking about in the email.
I don't think I got that email. I don't.
We sent it the day after the hearings, two days after the hearings.
It's been like two, three weeks probably since?
Um, yeah, since the fifth, I think.
I'll look back.
Yeah, but it lays it out, we have the spreadsheet and we show all the different lines, what we multiplied them by to get what we got for the revenue projection, which again, depending on what gets voted on tonight, will be brought to you as a re-projection in the final budget, like we bring anything that we feel we need to re-project.
Okay, so we are potentially using some of the revenue from item 17?
No.
In this budget?
No.
No?
No.
Not at all?
No. It was projected based, it was projected completely off of what we had historically and then with a percentage attached to it.
We got two more items? Anybody else have any questions? No? No, okay. Alrighty. Uh, let me go back and, okay, that does require our roll call vote. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve item 15?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Paul. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero. We're gonna move on to item 16, my very favorite subject. I'm kidding, it's really not, I'm joking. Okay. Anyways, we're moving on to item 16, discussion and provide direction to staff regarding 3751 Mesa Village Drive, Almagordo, New Mexico, also known as Rocket City Family Fund Center. And City Manager Holden has some information for us.
And so will Ms. Hernandez momentarily. Before we start, I, I do wanna remind you that we are in pending litigation in this matter, so we will not have any discussions whatsoever regarding the current state of litigation or of Mr. Chun individually at all. So this is strictly gonna be based on some future planning that we need some direction from the commission on, so that hopefully we can start moving to some resolve of that building that we own out there and try to figure out where we're going with it and what's gonna happen next. So if you want, I, I would be happy to wait for Commissioner Paul to return if, if that's okay, that way we, because I think there's some pretty important information.
Sorry, I guess I should have asked if you wanna take a break, I apologize.
And you can if you, if y'all want to.
I will, of course.
All right. Can we just take a five-minute break?
Sure, and I'll say this again.
Five minutes.
I'll say this again.
Alrighty.
Susan Payne, gutsy move.
About the potential opportunities that we will have with that building and as to what this commission's guidance is going to be for the options that we discussed in our, in one of our previous meetings where we talked about opportunities and we kind of laid out that there were basically three things that, that came to mind. There may be others that have surfaced since we last visited, but one was to sell the building outright, be completely out from underneath it. We did get an appraisal. It appraised for more than we owe on it, which is a good thing. So you could, you could sell the building and we could relieve ourselves of those bonds that we have outstanding, which are about 5.2 million. You could lease the building out to someone else to operate a fund center, if you will, similarly to what was done in the past, but we would have to go to a request for proposals to do that, where we would lay out with the help of the commission, the guidelines that we wanted to shoot for. We would publish the request for proposals, receive those, review those, and then ultimately, if the commission chose one of those to look at, we could go into negotiations with them. And thirdly, which is probably not the most ideal option, would be that the city could actually run a facility there if we, you chose for us to do that by creating another department as part of our parks group or whatever. But tho- those are the three primary options that we, that we saw as we've looked at this, and some of these are things that you discussed in, in our last meeting, and I think we've captured the three primary ones that we have. So while I can't, at this point, I have no idea when, when we're going to be able to be freed to the point where we can go at this 100%, but if we could get some idea and some direction from you, then we could start, if we need to start working on an RFP perhaps, we can do that. If you see that you decided you're more interested in the city running it, we can start trying to lay out a plan to get that done. And certainly, if you decide that you want to get out of the real estate business, you could get that done. I know, Stephanie, we've done some research and we can, we can sell the building. We can relieve ourselves of that bond indebtedness that we have and sell the building outright to someone to pay those off and let them, let the free market go out there and decide if, if a bowling alley works out there for them, great. If it doesn't, it, again, it's out of your hands and the bag doesn't fall and you're stuck holding the bag. I, I, I know, Stephanie, when we had the discussion about the ballot language, did we have anything new about that that we could share?
I mean, not little when I can discuss the ballot language.
Let's, let's do that because I know there's some concern about what people actually voted for when they voted for that, for that fund center.
So I know that there's a lot of discussion that the, the citizens voted for a bowling alley. I know that there was some literature out there saying that it could be this, it could be that. The actual language on the ballot basically states, I didn't bring it in.
Family entertainment.
Other papers, but the ballot says to approve, let me get it, it's on my, that's right. Basically, it's a rec center, a recreation center. That's the wording that was on the ballot. So-
Do you have that wording? Can you read it?
I do. I had it all good to go and I got it all mixed up with my airport stuff. So give me one second.
Sorry.
I just thought-
Because I, I, I remember that ballot and I remember that it was a little-
Up here, just, I got it.
Sort of big.
Okay.
You make it vague when you put a geo bond question on there because in the past, they did one for the library and they made it very, very specific and then they couldn't use the money. So you have to make it vague enough that you have some flexibility.
I think either way, you're confusing people. So-
Well, if you do and you don't.
Shall the City of El Magordo issue up to 6 million of general obligation bonds to, to be repaid from property taxes for the purpose of building, beautifying, improving, acquiring, constructing, equipping, and improving land and building for public parks and related recreation facilities. Project includes a family recreation center to be located at Mesa, at Site 8 Mesa Village.
So on the ballot, it actually said it was to be built at Mesa Village. Interesting.
But it says recreation center, but some of the other correspondence that I saw references bowling alley. So, but, but that was not on the ballot language.
Yeah. But I think everybody thought that it was going to be a rec center type facility because that's where all the controversy came in. Why are you building at Mesa Village? The kids can't get out there. Because I think in their mind, they were thinking a rec center type facility. I don't know what the intent of the commission was at the time because I wasn't on the commission, but-
Well, I have personally had a number of different groups, people, individuals have contacted me about interest in the building and I've pretty well steered all of them to the point where I said, look, we're not anywhere near that discussion yet. So I'm not, I have not sat down with anybody individually to talk about options because I don't believe that we're at that point yet, that the staff needs to be hearing proposals from people. So that's kind of where we wanted to get the feedback from you. And it's, it's just like with the airport rates and the water rates that we're about to deal with. Those things are not up to me, they're not up to the staff to decide. These are clearly major policy issues that will involve the commission's decisions and your wisdom on where you're wanting to go and what you want to see from your standpoint. That we're going to implement it and run with whatever that happens to be. So if you just, Stephanie, if you have some additional things you want to share.
I do. So I just kind of want to share, yeah, the appraisal came in over what we owe on the bond. The rental appraisal, and I think it's important that everybody understands that there is no more $2,000 a month. That, that has gone away. In this appraisal, if you take the lowest, the company actually suggests $12, but they give a range from $9 to $12. That's 315,000 a year. We can take it down based on market, the economy to 75%. That still takes it 230,000, which is about 20,000 a month. Even if you take it down to 25%, which we would have to really justify why we'd take it down that low, you're still talking about 7,000 a month. So I think it's really clear that if we go out for RFP, that it's understood out there that we're, we can't do the $2,000 a month. It's going to be significantly higher. Also, we have discussed internally, we don't feel that if that's the, the commission's decision for us to go out for RFP, that there's a company capable of running both so that we would request permission to do two RFPs, one to run the-
The restaurant.
Restaurant and the other to run the recreation facilities. So, and of course, if you want it to bring internal, there, it's going to, we're going to have to decide what does that look like. I don't think it'll be a full-on restaurant, but that's commissioned to decide. Snack bar, are we keeping the, there's a lot of decisions, but I think it starts with you giving direction so we can come and, with a better proposal for you.
When this thing was originally proposed, you've got to have all three pieces out there in order to make it work. If we broke it into two RFPs, it wouldn't work. Both of them would go bankrupt. The, the bar part of it is going to be-
It didn't work as it is now. And we have a lot of people very good in one area and we have a lot of people really good in others. We could keep it together. Now you're asking one company to pay a very extreme high monthly rent too. So I'm-
See, if, if, if one company doesn't do it all, you know, the bar guy might make a pretty good chunk of money in the restaurant portion of it, but the, the lanes and the laser tag may just break even. You know, it has to be done as a complete package. And, you know, we had quite a few people interested in running that and do the politics at the time. Some of them bowed out. Some of them weren't qualified bidders and it just was kind of a mess. So, but I, I think if we do go down that road, the RFP needs to be to run the whole facility as a whole. It doesn't need to be broke up into pieces.
Well, I think that if, if it's broken up into two pieces, I mean, I think that's up to the individual that's, that's going to put, submit their RFP. It's up to them to decide if they can make the money if we do decide to break it up into two, two separate components. So I don't think it's up, I don't think it's up, it's not our, our concern is can they pay their rent? Are they going to be able, you know?
I guess, I don't know, and I don't know if you guys can answer the question, but how, do you know how much it was making generally?
We don't know because he's never provided the financial statements. To kind of go back to Mayor Payne's, we, there's lots of ways to, we can go through this if we're going to split it up. Maybe it's an RFP for the restaurant part and the city runs the bowling alley.
It's just hard to put it out for RFP if you don't know how much money it was making.
And that's, that is, that is our problem and as-
Have you guys contacted-
City manager said, we're in litigation, so there's not much I can say, but-
Yeah, yeah, that's why I didn't know if you guys were in any way, so.
Have we reached out to Brunswick? Brunswick was one of the original bidders and they run these facilities all over the country. Have we reached out to them maybe as a-
We have not reached out to anybody.
Just as a consulting type, I can't remember that gentleman's name that we talked with originally because they were one of the bidders and then they bowed out after a local businessman had a chat with them.
Brunswick.
Oh my gosh, come on, gosh, knock it off. Jesus Christ.
But Brun- Brunswick was, was very interested in running the facility and had a very, very good business plan, business model, how to set up. And they know the, the industry very, very well because they do it nationwide. And I can't remember that guy's name, but it's probably in the information.
He wasn't the one that owed the IRS a million dollars, was he?
Brunswick was a complete, a different company.
I have, I have boxes of it that I've been sifting through and he, I, I have boxes that I've been sifting through and I have seen that name in there.
Probably in Matt's stuff. Adam, I think was his name.
I have everything. I have-
I have everything too because I was the person on the commission at the time. So I have all the information if you'd ever like to look at it.
Is there any likelihood that you would be interested to just get out of the building and sell the building to the open market and let somebody determine what they want to do with it? That's, that's a possibility.
I think that would also, just perspective, that would also help our debt, our debt capacity.
Are you guys able to reach out to a broker? I know Newmark has, you know, different divisions of what they do, but somebody that specializes in that specialty use and see, hey, with interest rates where they are today, with what we know about this particular property, is there a huge market in demand for this? Or are we looking at, okay, well, it appraised for 5.25, but you're going to have to take a million and a half dollar haircut-
Right.
-to incentivize somebody. I think it's, you know, calling and reaching out to see.
We haven't reached out to anybody, but we can, like, this is the first time we've actually been at a point where we could bring this forward to commission for your direction. Yes, sir.
So you're asking for our recommendations at this point?
Direction.
Just direction, right.
We're just trying to get direction on-
General consensus.
There is no, there's no effect of what the litigation will do to these, these options? That's completely out of the, so you're looking to us now for recommend or guidance on what we should do with that building?
I'm going to assume that we get the building and all the equipment and everything back to us.
So-
Okay. So let, let's do this.
Let me just, real quick, just to kind of follow up on that question. So if we're referring to the LITA, the LITA has been met, but the money that the LITA paid for was mostly construction, I mean, those type of things. So there's not a lot even, should we go to litigation, there's not a lot of stuff that's going to leave the building. Right now-
So pretty much everything would just stay?
Everything would just stay.
Everything would stay in the building.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So let's do this. Let's just, let's just deal with the first one, which is, is there any comment, consensus, question about our first option, which would be to sell the building? Anybody want to talk about how they feel about that?
I think until you talk to a broker, you don't know because we don't know what the marketplace is for that type of asset. So I mean, I think the city staff call a couple of different brokerages, Marcus Millichap, Newmark. Well, there's one other that's probably big nation, international. I'd reach out to them, just say, hey, who's handling these types of assets?
Who was the first?
Well, and I, and I think that-
Marcus and Millichap.
I think that's why I'm asking because we're supposed to give direction. So is that one of the things that we want to look at?
I mean, like I said, I mean, you're probably going to have to reduce the price, but it's, it's an option.
Right. And that's what I'm asking. So if that is, because I agree with you. I, I'm, I'm trying to picture in my head somebody that's willing to pay. I, I get that it appraises for 5 million. I'm just trying to picture somebody willing to pay that much.
What was the payoff again? 5, 9, 2, 5?
5, 2, 5, yeah, 5, 2, 5.
You know, something also an option, guys, and is, it doesn't cost us a whole lot for staff to put together an RFP and put it out there. See what response we get.
Okay, that was my next question.
If there's no response, then we know the avenue we need to take is, hey, nobody's interested in running this for us and we can dump it.
I, I will tell you that I have received several calls from several different, I, you know, obviously, I just direct them back to staff, but I will tell you that I've received several calls from several different companies, places, whatever, that I, I don't know a lot about this. You are way more savvy on this stuff than I am. I know, because I know you deal with a lot of commercial real estate. But in my opinion, that would be good options. But I don't know enough about them. I just know on the surface, just based on who they are, that, but-
Well, and I would say that from a local perspective-
Yes.
Some of the people I've talked to are from a local perspective. We would have to treat them or their group just as we would any other-
Right.
-RFP recipient. So I think we, we certainly can put together-
Right.
-a suggested RFP for your consideration, along with doing these commercial real estate checks and give you at least something to flip coins over if, if, if that's where it leads to. But I don't think that's an issue for us.
Okay, so, and that's really what I'm asking. Does anybody even want to entertain the idea of potentially selling the building?
Well, that's why we're-
Or is that even on the table?
Yes.
That's why we're doing the commercial.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that one. Okay.
You know, I honestly feel we should put together an RFP, advertise it 30 or 45 days, see what kind of interest we even have. And if there's no interest, then we don't have another option. We either run it in-house or we sell it.
So on the next, next meeting, we can have made some phone calls. We can do that amongst staff, see what that interest is. And then also, I guess, if, bring the RFP forward to commission, not go put it out there. What does the RFP look like for you?
Right.
My question was going to be is what are we committed to if we do receive replies to that?
Since we're in it.
We can pull it.
We control them all out.
Any or all without any, any implication.
And that's the other issue too, is we don't know whether we could even allow another operator in there yet because of the circumstances.
And that is one of my worries because even though I feel confident, I also know that the court always does, or can do all things that you would expect.
Depends on how liberal the judge is, yeah.
So, but at least-
If it goes to litigation, we're not saying that we're going to litigation. We're saying if it does.
If it does.
But we don't want to just keep waiting, waiting, and waiting to come up with something at least so that when that ball drops, we're ready to go, either maybe with a, a sale or another lease.
Okay.
How, how, so we can, we can take-
So we want to look at the potential or what we can do if we decide to sell it. We want to look at an RFP.
I think those are the two options.
Please tell me no, but do we want to look at the city potentially running it?
That's the last option, I think. You know, if, if the market doesn't, you know, after you reach out to these consultants and the market doesn't allow us to sell it.
And if that's the option, then the directors that didn't show up are going to be the ones who, the ones watching online.
And how good you-
Does that make sense?
Wait, what did you say?
Ronnie, Belinda.
Do the RFP first. If there's no response, you know, reach out to the consultants with the, with the real estate.
No, I think we need to do both because it sounds like some of us might be interested in selling that building. So I think we need to do both. I don't think we need to put one before the other. I think that-
We're going to actually, I, my plan, and you can tell me, you know, you're crazy, Stephanie, because, you know, I am, to make some phone calls, see if there is a market, see if there's any potential, and then work with purchasing and Evelyn to get an RFP, whether it's the full-on RFP or splitting it up, and then bring them both to you so you guys can see what that looks like with, along with the information about, we've spoken to a broker and there's a lot of interest in these bill, or there's absolutely no interest. And then that can, as Commissioner Rorance, kind of dictate our path forward.
If you like the RFP, then you could help amend it and we'll send it out to the court.
We, we may put the RFP out and have no respondents and we may reach out to these consultants and they're like, hey, you know, there's no market for this. So we may be stuck with-
Congratulations, Ronnie, you get a bowling alley.
Right.
Trying to be a little proactive instead of waiting until somebody feels that it's completely ours. We got to, we got to hustle to do something. Keep in mind, we're not making any money.
Honestly, I would reach out to Brunswick and they may be able to help you guys with the RFP of the services.
I have their name and I'll, I'll reach out to them. I'll reach out to-
Those guys were like the cream of the crop when it came to running that facility. Their presentation beat everybody's. They were just way better than everybody else that was in the, the running, but then they bowed out.
I believe that even, yeah.
Well, we'll work on those, those two primary things and get those back to you as soon as we can. But I, we've got so many things going on and I don't want to throw something at you that, you know, first meeting in June and-
And this is the first, the first, the first time we're actually a little bit on solid ground that we can speak in an open meeting about it. So this is why we're bringing these options to you now.
Thank you.
I think everybody's in agreement that the city running, it's like the very, very last option.
You're not doing that.
That's a terrible idea.
I like that. Thank you right there.
We're not doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we are going to move on to item 17. It's consider an act upon ordinance 1700 for first pub, is it 1700? Yeah, for first publication, repealing chapter eight, article eight dash zero eight, cross connection prevention and control. Basically, that has to do with water, sewer and sewage disposal. There is a, a very small change in the ordinance that's in the packet. If you look at 28 dash zero two dash zero eight zero, public buildings connections A, it says no public service building. Do you see that? It should be changed to all public service buildings. So from the word no to the word all. Did I get that right? I think I got that right.
That's what we're voting on?
We're not voting on that specific, but that is a change to the overall.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, this is very similar in a sense to what we did.
Oh, also, I'm sorry, I do have one person signed up for this.
Might want to let them go in.
I'm wondering if I, we should have them go first.
Yeah, because this could be a while.
This could take a minute. So, is it, is it Ali Kasim is the last name? Did I get that right?
Kasam.
Kasam. Okay. Thank you for being here.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you guys for allowing me to speak here. The main reason I'm here to speak today is to talk about the base rate that applies to all, to anyone who's connected to a, a water meter, whether that meter is active or not, and in some cases, whether there's even a structure on that property or not. My partners and I, we recently bought a mobile home park at 1101 Mescalera St., yeah, Mescalera Street. It's a completely vacant mobile home park. There's no homes attached to it, but there are five water meters for the property. When we brought the property, we didn't actually even sign up for water service, but by ordinance, we were automatically enrolled in water service. We recently found out that we've been being charged $80 per water meter per month to use zero gallons of water. So every month, we're being charged $400 to use zero gallons of water. In contrast to that, my home that I live in on Dexter Lane, last month, we used 5,400 gallons of water and our, our water rate was $25.33. So right now, we're being charged $400 to use zero gallons of water on a property that has no structures versus $25.33 to use almost 6,000 gallons. It's crippling our investment in this property. Right now, we're in the process of installing all new sewer lines, all new water lines. We're in the process of working with a civil engineer to redesign all of our plumbing. This process, probably from beginning to end, will take about six months until we actually have any running water. In that time, we'll have run about $2,400 of utility billing to use not a single drop of water. It's crippling our investment. It's tying up so much of our cash. We were told that the only option to opt out of having connection to, or having to pay this is either to have a plumber disconnect our water meters entirely, which would be a huge investment, or pay two years' worth of the base rate to opt out of water service, only to then opt back into water service six months later. And so just in general, it, it seems like a policy that makes no sense that we can't not enroll in water service. If we use the water, it seemingly would cost us less than if we don't use the water because my guess is that if we just ran the water for a little while and then turned off the water, they would only charge us for the water we use versus the base rate that, I don't even know why it applies. But yeah, it's, it just, the whole policy seems like it makes no sense. I talked to the utility billing company to see, hey, can we at least reduce not having to pay for five meters? And they said, no, the policy and, and the, the ordinance is that if you have a meter connected, you have to pay the base rate. So we couldn't even get out of paying $400 a month. So yeah, that's my, thank you guys.
Thank you. I do know that with this new proposed ordinance, if it passes tonight, it won't go into effect right away. There's some legal things, but ultimately, it will do away with all of that. So-
But that didn't help him right now.
It doesn't help him right now. And I'm not sure if we can help him right now. Obviously, that's not an actionable item, but-
Yeah.
Do know that we're working on it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I, I was going to, I, I wanted to take the opportunity to, to tell the young man that, you know, based on what I heard, I think we can solve that problem.
I think we can.
Unfortunately, it can't, it can't be today or tomorrow or next week, but a lot of it depends on where we're headed. I do want you to know that you're going to hear Brian in just a moment. You have each met Brian. You've each gone to the opportunity to hear about the new water rate structure and, and some of the changes that, that we've made. We've tried to simplify it tremendously from what it used to be, eliminating some of those base rates that we're talking about. Having a, a, a simple, one, one price per water. It costs the same no matter whether it's a gallon or 100 gallons. But tonight, primarily what you're going to talk about tonight is not the rates, the physical rates, the cost per gallon. None of that is tonight. We have to get tonight done. We have to get our ordinance up to date, kind of similar to what you did with the, the airport. We've got to get the ordinance up to date so that we then, can then come back in with that rate structure. And so I'm going to let Brian kind of go through the, the slides with you again. Some of these you've seen, but I think it will be a good opportunity. Some of you have gone out and looked at some of our facilities and seen exactly, you know, what's going on out in the field and you have a good sense of what is going on or needs to go on in the future in order to preserve and protect the water system and grow the water and sewer systems to be able to accommodate where we're going to be headed with new growth, hopefully. And even if there's no new growth, you've got to take care of what's here, some of which is, has already been repaired and, and being changed even as we speak. I think some of you went into the, the tank and saw it. Now, so it's coming along. Stephanie, was there anything else specifically you think of before I turn Brian on this? He, he's been waiting patiently. He got here from, from Florida, so he's, he's thinking, he's ready to talk about rates. So we'll, we'll let Brian go ahead and then we'll be here to answer your questions as we go forward.
Good evening, Commissioners, city staff, members of the public. My name is Brian Mance from, from Govrates and I have, this is the first public hearing to discuss the results of the utility rate study. So as everyone's aware, the utility provides an essential service on a continuous basis where public health and safety is a primary objective. It's also highly regulated and regulatory bodies include the New Mexico Environment Department, the Department of Health, the EPA, and permits require satisfactory operating performance. It's also an enterprise fund where in this kind of fund structure, It's also an enterprise fund where in this kind of fund structure, this government fund structure is set up so that operations are primarily funded through user rates and fees. And the last user rate adjustments became effective in July two thousand fifteen, were almost nine years ago. There is, this utility has substantial infrastructure under city management where you have about a hundred sixteen million dollars installed cost of assets. Now, if I were to right-size those based on when the, you know, when they were installed and kind of right-size them to, into today's dollars, you get about an estimated replacement cost of depreciable assets based on age of about two hundred thirty-nine million. So that's a big chunk of change under city management. So in rate studies, we, we identify what we call revenue requirements, which are basically what we have to fund through our user rates. So these include your operating and maintenance expenses, any kind of debt you have, you pays you go capital needs, any kind of administrative transfers and reserve allowances. All these elements together make up annual revenue requirements. So with respect to issues for the utility, for, for the utility rate study, the first one is a public health and safety issue. There are substantial capital needs and as Rick was mentioning, you know, people who have had the, the opportunity to take a tour of the facilities have found the tour to be eye-opening and really stress the amount of reinvestment that, that the system really needs. It's also important to recognize that Almagordo is of course, a desert community and the water requires, has to go through pipes, travel through pipes, anywhere from seven miles to eighty-eight miles to, to reach your community. And so obviously, the, the utility is very reliant on that infrastructure to, to, to get its, its water. These capital needs are, we, the utility infrastructure is often out of sight, out of mind, and about a hundred sixteen million dollars in critical capital needs have been identified through the two thousand thirty, through the fiscal year two thousand thirty-two. And these are primarily rehabilitations or, or replacements of assets reaching the end of their service lives to continue providing service. And Rick was, was mentioning the, the water tank. This, this picture does not do, do it justice as to how bad the, the condition is that the, that the, that, that the tank is in, but the engineering report basically said, this is an extremely poor condition and failing, the roof's not safe to walk on and roof collapses is imminent, and this is where some of your water is stored. And here again are some other, just some, some pictures where you have a lot of utility infrastructure that is, again, mostly out of sight, out of mind. This shows you the, the condition of that, of what a lot of your infrastructure looks like. That, the, the, this, that little blue thing in the top left corner, the little, that blue piece of equipment was, before it was replaced, it was, it had a date of nineteen forty-three on it. So that shows you just how old some of this infrastructure is. This, this, this concrete structure in the top left corner, that, that, this, this, this opening, you can have, it has spider, has spider webs in it, there, there animals can get into the water supply, just a lot of different, a lot of, you know, infrastructure that needs to be addressed. And again, here's some more, some more pictures of this, this infrastructure. So there are possible regulatory issues if the city's not proactive in addressing these capital needs. These, these, this kind of infrastructure, the, this need to replace the, the, the infrastructure is not going to go away, but it's just going to be more expensive to address in the future. And we talked about, as one of the first slides, about how the utility is highly regulated and, you know, there, there could be future fines or consent orders if the infrastructure failures cause environmental harm or jeopardize public health and, and safety. And, and also, you know, added to, you know, possible fines, considered additional legal expenses involved in having to deal with a, a fines and a consent order, which basically says that you didn't do it, you must do this, you know, because, because you're, you're jeopardizing public health and safety. With respect to water distribution systems, you can see in this chart here that there have been a lot of, that, that there's been an increase in water main failures and repairs over the past couple of years, an increase in the, the, the water line emergency response failures. There's been an increase in the number of water service lines replaced and certainly at the, toward the, toward the, the beginning of this, of this meeting, you know, there was discussion of, of a water main that just has, has been, you know, repeatedly having, having failures and how there's a need to, to proactively fix it. And these line breaks affect other areas of the city. The city can't fix most roads before the line breaks are addressed. So this shows a, a breakdown of, of the one hundred sixty point four million dollars. Like I said, most of this is, the biggest project is the snake well, snake tank well transmission line, which is, is required in order to get water from your reverse osmosis plant. And also in there is our, your water main replacements like what was being discussed earlier in the, in the meeting. With respect to projected funding of these capital needs, we've recognized a, a balance of debt financing and pays you go capital, where about a hundred seventy, a hundred seven billion dollars is, is from additional senior lien debt with the others with the remainder funded through rate revenues and operating reserves. You, you got certain replacements and renewals that are, that are ongoing and routine and those are things that you wouldn't want to necessarily debt finance. Those are things that should just be paid on a, on a, on a pays you go basis. But certainly, any major infrastructure that has a, has a, has a long life, that's, that's appropriate for debt financing. Another issue is substantial operating expense increases. The National CPI has increased by thirty percent since the user rates were last increased in July two thousand fifteen. The construction cost index has increased thirty five, four percent since last user rate adjustments and the water and sewer maintenance index, which is actually a component of the National CPI, it's increased by thirty-eight percent since the last user rate adjustments. And it's important to recognize that the utility has limited control over many operating costs such as electricity, chemicals, repair parts and supplies. These are driven by global market forces, but I, we represented here some cost increases since the last user rates adjustments for water and wastewater, common use parts and treatment chemicals. You can see brass fittings are up over a hundred percent, clamps over a hundred percent, service saddles, gate valves, mechanical joint accessory packs up big time, fire hydrants, joint couplers, just massive increases since, since the rate adjustments were, were, rates were last adjustment, adjusted and, and the utility, you know, hasn't had any rate relief to pass through these costs to customers. One of the key increases here is, is the potable pipe toward the end, where potable part, pipe has been increasing, you know, the, the increase, and these, this is, potable pipe is, is what, what you would use to, to repair some of the roads, and yet it's been up two hundred fifty to three hundred percent since the last user rate adjustments. Again, water meter setters, valve box, just tremendous increases in parts. And again, this is, be, these are beyond the, the cities or the utilities' control. Another operating expense is the pay study to help retain existing staff. There are nationwide issues with filling positions and keeping employees and a well-trained, experienced and sufficient utility staff is critical for effectively running the utility twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, for maintaining level service and for emergency preparedness. But due to the regulatory environment, utility costs normally increase at a higher rate than, than CPI. And one of the big issues right now is, is for, among utilities is how to deal with PFOS or forever chemicals. There, there are new regulatory requirements on, on, on the, the amount of parts you can have for, for, in, in your water. But a key takeaway is that permanent increase in costs must ultimately be passed through to customers through rates or basically utility's not going to be sustainable. Another issue is debt service coverage. The utility's existing loans with the New Mexico Finance Authority have a one hundred thirty percent maximum annual debt service coverage requirement. And this is just for, you know, people who, you know, just for laypeople, debt service coverage basically is your gross rev, gross revenues, less your operating expenses, not including cash items such as, non-cash items such as depreciation divided by your annual debt service. So basically, under your existing loans, you have to meet this one hundred thirty, this, the debt service coverage has to equal one hundred thirty percent. Well, under the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget to operating expenses, the utility is not anticipated to meet its coverage requirement. And if coverage is not being met on existing debt, there's no way that the city is, or the utility is going to be able to secure additional debt financing for these major or critical capital needs. And certainly bond resolutions and loan agreements have provisions for events of adult default and it's just not, it's, it's just not good to, to get into that situation where they might be able to accelerate payments and say, okay, well, you borrowed ninety million dollars from us, okay, ninety million dollars is, is due right now because you, you, you're in default. It's also good to target higher coverage percentage than what's required so that there's more funding after payment of operating expenses and debt service to address your routine or recurring capital needs. And again, we, we talked about that a little bit. You know, a best financial management practice is less dependence on debt, debt financing the associated interest and issuance costs. I mean, any routine and recurring expenses should be paid on a, on a, on a pays you go basis, whereas anything that's going to provide a long-term benefit like fifteen or more years, that might be suitable for debt financing because then you have what we call inter-period equity where the, the payment of the asset is spread over not only existing customers, but also future customers are paying for, for a portion of that asset. So rate adjustments, you know, because of, of coverage issues and not having passed through all these massive operating expense increases, rate adjustments are needed to access capital markets. When evaluating the utility's ability to repay debt, credit rating agencies and lenders will only consider rate increases that have been adopted. When you issue bonds, the, the rating agencies usually want to see a five-year projection of needs and they want to see if, that the, that the five-year projected capital, there's already a rate and financial plan that has been adopted to, to fund this, this five-year plan. Certainly, a hundred percent pays you go funding of the capital program and these critical capital needs would require much higher adjustments. So revenues under existing rates are insufficient to address the utility system needs. And this, this chart, the, the red line shows the projected revenues under existing rates and the bars show the revenue requirements. So the dark blue bar represents operating expenses. The green bar represents the, the, the bond financing that we're, that we, that we're talking about for financing a couple of these critical, some of these, a lot of these critical capital needs. And you can see it does increase over time as we, as we issue the, the debt. And then the, the light blue and the, and the, and the purple are basically pays you go funding from, from rates. And you can see that at our current trajectory, we're, we're kind of fund, funding operating expenses right now, but eventually we'll get to a point where, where we can, can't even fund our operating expenses. And so if you're not, if you're not funding your operating expenses, you're obviously not funding your existing debt. If you're not funding your operating expenses and your debt, you're obviously not making, meeting debt service coverage. So it's not a, a sustainable scenario. So what are the financial risks of not adjusting rates? Well, if I, if we were to just zero up the rate adjustments, you can see that we would quickly run out of cash and, and we would, we would run into, to issues with, with our, with our, our lenders. We wouldn't be meeting, we would be in default of our, of our coverage requirements. So what is the projected need for revenue adjustments? And again, you know, these, these adjustments are partly a function of just having not, not raised rates for, for nine years. The percentages are, are probably scarier than the dollar amounts, but basically, under the, under the proposed plan, we would be asking customers, and again, six thousand gallons is the average usage for a single-family residential customer in the system. We would ask them to, to pay anywhere from one point, from one point two cents to two point three cents per gallon of water and sewer service. So basically, for, for that, for, and, and in two thousand twenty-five, one point two cents per gallon to have water delivered to your residents and then taken away once you're, once you're finished with it. Now, we wouldn't propose, you know, we, we proactively vet these plans for affordability because we don't want to come, come before a governing body and, and prevent, and, and they present something that's not affordable. So meeting the, the Environmental Protection Agency has historically considered four point five percent of median household income to be the affordability threshold. And you can see that under this plan, and that's, and this is the, the, the right-hand column here, we're not even close to four point five percent. So by any utility industry standard, this would be an affordable plan and it will allow us to, to, to be an operationally and financially viable and sustainable utility. Now, to provide some perspective, I've, I've presented in, from, from certain governing bodies and I've heard the, the comment, well, we, we definitely don't want to be Flint, Michigan. A lot of people are familiar with the, the issues, you know, that, that the city of Flint, Michigan had. Well, prior, in two thousand fifteen, prior to its, its infamous water crisis, the city of Flint, Michigan charged a hundred sixty-two dollars and ten cents for six thousand gallons of water and sewer service. And they are a much poorer community, but you can see that under our plan, under, under this plan here, we're nowhere close to, to a hundred sixty-two dollars and ten cents. So, but you can see under the, here, you, you see the projected financial position, you can see that the, the, under the proposed rate plan, the, the revenues represented by the solid red line, you know, meet our revenue requirements. And, and I know there's been some, some discussions, well, how much revenue would the, would the, would the rates generate? And that, this is, this gives you a, an estimate. So, you know, by the end, you'd have about a little bit, you know, probably around twenty five, twenty, probably around twenty-seven million dollars of, of annual revenue through, through these adjustments. With respect to, you know, what, financial targets, you know, we're, we're not reaching for the moon. A double A, this, this, we've targeted three hundred sixty-five days cash on hand, which is basically one year of operating expenses, not including non-cash items like depreciation and amortization. You can see that under this plan, we're definitely lower, we have a, we're lower than our target in two thousand twenty-six, but then we gradually increase. You can see from the, the, from the, from the green dotted line here, that's the, that's the, the Fitch median for double A rated utilities. And I would say most utilities do try and strive for a double A rating because, and the associated savings and interest and issuance costs. We're not, we're not proposing to, to target that, that level, but it is important to have a certain level of operating reserves because as, as you've heard several times, nowadays, utilities are, are, are getting capital bid, you know, bids for projects that are twice the, the engineering estimate where they're, and it's, it's, so you want to have some, some operating reserves to be able to, to have the flexibility to adjust if you, if you get an unforeseen operating or capital expense. And here you can see under where we targeted two hundred percent debt service coverage in our, in our, in this, in this plan. We, we don't reach there in two thousand twenty-five, but we do reach there in all of the other, other years of the forecast period and from a credit worthiness. And from a credit worthiness standpoint, debt service coverage and cash reserves are the most important financial metrics. With respect to user rate design, the current rate structure is considered overly complicated and administrated burdensome. So we've simplified, we're proposing the simplification of water user rates. We have a single volumetric rate for all usage. The volumetric rate for irrigation accounts is twice that for other account types. We recommend elimination of special rates to the extent possible, and we also recommend simplification of the sewer rates and the elimination of the winter quarterly rate. We were recommending a reclaimed water volumetric rate equal to 50% of the total water irrigation rate. There's no current or proposed base charge on reclaimed water service. And to address the, this young man's comment, you know, we are under this, this proposed rate structure, proposing to allow water shut-offs and the termination of building, basically elimination of mandatory account transfers. There've been a lot of customer complaints on this issue, and we think that this is a step in the right direction. So how does, how does Alamo Gordo's rates, how do they compare against those of other New Mexico utilities? And this shows a comparison. And you can see that under the proposed 2025 rates, we would be char, we would be right in the middle of what other utilities are, are, in New Mexico are currently charging. We know that they're going to be increasing their rates, you know, in 2000, most of them will be increasing their rates in 2025. Also, you can see that under, and, and in general, you would, I would expect that, you know, all the, all these other utilities are facing the same, the same challenges that Alamo Gordo is, is facing and having to, to adjust their rates accordingly. So the, the takeaway is that as, you know, other utilities, as other utilities address their, their, their rates and increase their rates to recover their costs, Alamo Gordo's rates will continue to be competitive. It, you can see that La Luz, which is right down the street, they don't have sewer service. They're, everyone has septic tanks, but, but you can see that their water rates on, on this chart are higher than what would be proposed for, than what's being proposed for Alamo Gordo for 2025. But a rate, rates are, are, a rate compare, a bill comparison is not a report card on how well a utility is performing because there are a lot of reasons why user rates differ among utilities. You know, the amount of customers you have, whether they're spread apart or close together, the level of capital improvements you have, the amount of renewals and replacements you have, differences in bond covenants, you know, whether you're, whether you have a freshwater supply or a, or a brackish water supply or saltwater supply and the associated treatment process costs, your plant capacity utilization, and, and your, the assistance of finding such a capacity. We've talked about how, you know, some, some, some of the, your neighboring New Mexico utilities may have had some, may have benefited from some oil, oil funds, time of late last review, and the amount of, you know, general funded administrative fee transfers. Just every utility is, is different, and so, you know, it's, it's a conversation topic to compare it, but, but at the end, Alamo Gordo's needs are Alamo Gordo's needs, and, you know, and it's not a report card on how well the utility is performing. We are recommending a rate indexing adjustment clause, which is just very common among utilities, where in the absence of a formal rate study recommendation or commission action, there would be automatic rate increases based on the Consumer Price Index. I know that the Consumer Price Index has been brought up multiple times, and we're proposing a provision of the greater 3% for the change in the, in the CPI. And what I, what I, you know, the, basically, the, you know, the commission can always choose to, to not move forward with an automatic rate index, Dex provision, right, automatic rate index in, in a given year. The commission is also always in charge, but that just gives you some kind of mechanism to keep up with, with, with inflation, so you're not faced with, with, you know, with, with these larger catch-up increases in, in the future. So it's, it's, it's considered a, a best managed practice, and if you're, you do, if you have conversations with bond rating agencies and you're, and you're showing inflationary adjustments, the question will always be, are these automatic? And the best answer to give them is, well, yes, yes, they are. So that's something to, it's a, it's a good, it's a good recommended practice to, to avoid larger catch-up increases. Other charges and policies, the city staff has performed a comprehensive review to modernize Chapter 28 of, of the city's codes of ordinances, and that's something that's being voted on today. Considerations for determining the proposed other charges and policies where the, where the current utility cost provides service, comparison with similar charges and policies of other New Mexico utilities and, and city policies. And, and when, when, right, it's, a lot of these charges, what they're doing is they're shifting the cost recovery to the people actually needing the service. So to the extent that these charges are not right-sized to recover the cost of providing services, the cost difference has to be paid through the monthly user rates of all customers, which, you know, that, so in, in general, it's, it's, it's in the, it's, it's in the, probably in the city's best interest to, to recover the direct costs, to charge the, the direct costs of providing service to the people using the service. So what are the benefits to Alamo Gordo residents of the rate and financial plan? You'll maintain water quality and treatment standards. You'll be in compliance with the latest regulatory requirements, less risk of finance, fines, fines and consent orders. You'll have improved fire, water pressure and fire protection as a result of line replacements. You'll have less risk of surface interruptions and boil water notices, fewer line breaks, which is a public health and safety issue. You can repair the roads after line break issues are addressed, so you'll have improved road conditions, and you can systematically fund the water and sewer portion of the district maintenance programs or the SMP. Very key is that you'll have access to, to debt financing and capital markets. You can't secure debt financing for critical capital needs if you're not meeting, if you're not, if your existing rates aren't recovering your, your existing operating expenses and debt. And 100% pay-as-you-go funding of the capital program would require much, much higher rate adjustments. You can accommodate economic development and new, new mandatory account transfers. You'll have, so you have a decrease in future liens. We're, we're allowing people to disconnect from the, from the water system and no longer be responsible for the base charges, while the less complicated rate structure and by any utility industry standard, we would still have affordable and competitive rates. So what are the recommendations? We recommend adopting the water and sewer rates, fees and charges for fiscal years 2025 to, to 2029. Like I said, when you're securing debt financing, the, the, your rating agencies or lenders want to see a fully funded five-year plan of, of the capital needs that you're, that you're planning to, to, to fund. So it is necessary to secure additional financing. And the staff needs to know the revenue stream to implement the multi-year capital program since projects usually take more than one year complete, and funding has to be in place to enable bidding, bidding for projects. And again, user rates have not been adjusted for almost nine years. We do recommend adopting the other charges and policy, the proposed modernization changes to Chapter 28 of the city code, and that includes the automatic rate indexing provisions that are considered a utility best managed or practice, and again, can help prevent these larger catch-up increases in the future, and to update the financial and rate plan as needed. Monitor your actual versus projected results. There will be a response to, to, to any rate structure changes. You need to, there is, there's, you got to, you do need to, to measure the actual versus projected results, and it's just good to, to perform a financial checkup review at least once every three years. Certainly with, with capital needs, you know, capital programs can be, can become outdated the next day. And so it's just good to be proactive in, in, in financial planning, and because proactive financial planning helps to preserve the ability to gradually phase in any rate adjustments. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Y'all have any specific questions, O'Brien, before we move on?
Anybody have any questions?
I think y'all, y'all have gotten the privilege to hear this more than once.
Yes.
So, as a reminder-
We should make that clear with, that we've already heard this, so we were, we knew it.
Absolutely.
Just for anybody out there, they don't think that, you know, we're not paying attention.
As a reminder, this, this is something that didn't just start. This has been in the making for a couple of years now. Before some of you came on to the commission, obviously before I came here, they had already begun looking at the rate process, the rate design, and had taken into account virtually everything that Brian discovered, and certainly the young man behind us that spoke to you earlier. Those were the things that we heard from the community, we heard from the commission, and there's some things in the rate design that we have put together to try to make it a simpler, a simpler water bill when you get it. Now granted, it's going to cost some money going forward, but you also have not raised rates in nine years. And as you see, the primary reason for raising rates at this point is so that we can have some bondable capacity. We can't, we can't go out and do the $160 million worth of projects over the next ensuing years through 2032-ish or so, until we get some stuff done here in terms of money. And you can't go to the bond market if you don't have a rate plan that the commission has adopted and guaranteed the ability to keep the rates up with the cost of our debt service and of the costs of our operations. So, you know, going forward with the built-in adjustments, it's going, it's going to be difficult some, for some folks to, to get used to, but the likelihood of having water is, is a, is a greater likelihood if we've got some way to provide a future for that, for that water. Tonight, again, and to, to get further into what you're actually going to look at tonight is the actual ordinance, which we've got to adopt so that we can get it in place and have the multiple readings. And then when we come back to you in June, you will get the actual rate proposal that will spell out all of the, the costs, the ancillary costs, the service fees, the, you know, the cost per gallon, everything, or we're not using gallons here, but you're going to have all of those rates that you'll look at for approval in, in June. And if approved in June, then they will go into effect in July, July the 8th, I think it was. So I know, I'm going to, I'm going to compliment the staff, and I know Stephanie spent hours and hours working on, on the changes and revisions. I know some of you got them, Josh, I know that, because you came by and picked yours up last week. So you had a, you had a packet of information that is, it's got a lot of stuff in it. And I don't know, you know, how much of it you got to look at before tonight, but to revise this ordinance is what our, our primary step is tonight, which affects the rate design and, and the things that you see in here with, you know, how we do that business, not how much we charge, but how we, how we do that business. And I don't think this has been adjusted in, I, I don't really know how long, but it's, it's been a long time. So if you've got some specific questions about, about these, and again, Stephanie spent every page and went through every single line, so if there's something that you're not sure about, we can, we can try to answer those questions for you to adopt this ordinance. But by adopting the ordinance tonight, you're not approving new rates. Those rates will be done next month. Yes, sir?
Again, I like to compliment the staff and Brian on this study and the excellence of what you've done. I've noticed that a lot of people who don't have this information get upset. Will there be a chance for public comment, review, whatever, down the line?
Absolutely. During that June 25th meeting is, is when the floor would be open for people to get up and ask questions and comments and, and again, you, you certainly, as the commission, just like you do with the rates we talked about earlier, you, you have the prerogative to adjust those rates as you see fit.
Thank you.
Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that's, that answers it.
Got quite a few questions. Oh, go ahead.
One thing I had noticed, and maybe you can speak to it, or I don't know if somebody else can, there were several or quite a few areas throughout the document that are replacing city commission with city manager. Can you, just reasoning behind that?
Most of that, Stephanie, you want to, because she's spent countless hours, and I can promise you, it's not so that I have authority to do a lot of stuff, but there are going to be some weird things that fall outside of the scope of the normal traditional ordinances and rates that just gives us the ability to deal with customers, I think we're fixing the gang up, that gives me the ability to deal with a customer issue and not, and resolve problems, not to, not to change rates and do things like that, but to resolve issues that need to be handled on a day-to-day basis that are not typically the commission's responsibility. And anyways, customer-friendly.
So basically, that's what it is, is there's a lot of these things in here that are day-to-day operational that wouldn't, that shouldn't rise to the commission level. Of course, everybody has the option to come to the commission at any given moment. This is a group effort. I put it together, but all of us here, including Nicole, who's hiding, and Brian, who had input on every part, on every part of this. So it wasn't intended to take it out of the commission's hand. It was basically to streamline it because depending on when the issue arrives, it could be a couple of weeks before we even resolve the issue.
I got quite a few questions on this, but one of mine was Commissioner Paul's issue, and, and, you know, if we do change that, I, I would like it stated in there that the commission can't overrule staff.
Oh, absolutely.
Basically, and a lot of mine are more of the technical side of this. You know, first one is, you know, applications. One of the biggest issues that I see being in the building industry is timeline. We drop permit off, sometimes it takes a lot longer than it's supposed to. I would like a timeline in the ordinance of staff has 24 hours, 72 hours, whatever it may be, to get that permit out. And if they don't get it to their review committee, that'd be in Section 282040 is, is where it states that. It's, there's no timeline in there.
Where are you? I'm sorry.
It's 28, I don't have pages on this.
No, I know.
It's Section 2802040, and it's, it's for connections.
Gotcha.
So that's going to affect like new builders and that kind of stuff. I would like a timeline in there.
Okay.
And then-
What would your, what preference?
In my eyes, 24 hours, but, you know.
We don't always have the staff, and there's sometimes, so on most of our, we do 4872.
Okay. I did notice that a lot of this is going into the P&amp;Z office, and are we going to have to add additional staff in order to cover a lot of this?
So a lot of the stuff that's going into the P&amp;Z office is, is the backflow at the end. So, you know, obviously, that's something, that's been in there. That's how it was passed, was with the P&amp;Z office, when initially the backflow was passed. So a lot of what was changed with that was some of the rewording. So when you're talking about the permits in 2802, which exactly, 2802 what?
2802040.
040.
It's like on the, I don't know, about five or six pages.
Sorry, thank you. I didn't, yeah, I didn't hear that.
It's just, I would, I'd like any kind of permit that comes to the city needs to have a timeline that staff has to follow. Because out here in our world, time is money. You know, you guys, two weeks doesn't mean anything. To us, two weeks is, is a huge deal out in the, in the actual industry. You know, when we're waiting that long to, to get a connection or wait on a piece of paper to tell us that we can do this. My second area, sorry, this is going to take a little bit, guys, but in the inspections on the connections, it states in here, you know, the public works inspector, which I don't have any problem with that. I just want to make sure we're not- I just want to make sure we're not stepping on the state's toes, because the, we're kind of right there at that area where we handle part of it, the state handles part of it.
But I don't think the state-
We handle it.
Basically, from the meter-
Yeah, the state doesn't inspect our-
From the meter back to the service line is gonna be our part, and then from the meter to the house is gonna be the state's portion.
And that's what we're saying, is that the, inspecting the sewer connection, which is the connection into our line.
This is for water, but yeah, sewer water's gonna be same.
For sewer, yeah.
But, and there again, a timeline in the ordinance for when that inspector comes out there, because we've had numerous problems in the past where a plumber will go out and do the work, they, they backfill, and then they're being forced to dig it back up because the inspector didn't come out and look at it. And I, I feel we need a timeline in there of, because-
Do you feel that it's appropriate to put a timeline in an ordinance and versus putting a timeline in a policy? Because putting a timeline in an ordinance doesn't allow for any consideration for staff funding, changes in the state law that happen on the fly versus an internal policy that is set by the city manager that says, okay. Because like right now, we have two public work inspectors on the jobs.
If we want to do it that way, that's, that's fine.
But we, yeah, because we've got one that just put in their two-week notice, and we have one that's on FMLA.
And we have some, because a lot of this is tricking out, we have some policies that we're gonna have to bring forward on 6/25. And we can add that too.
You know, like the state of New Mexico used to be, you call that in, and they were supposed to have you an inspection done within 24 hours of calling that in. And that's changed due to staffing, and I think it's 48 now. But that's important to us, because, you know, we can't schedule stuff until we know about those inspections.
Yeah, I, let me, let me do a, an internal policy, because I, I do agree. Put, and I've never seen anything like that in an ordinance, not that it can't be, but it is easier to operate from a policy, because there are going to be times where it may be difficult to meet those requirements. And, yeah, I've been in those situations where, not here yet, but where we've had to have people dig stuff up. But sometimes too, the contractors get a little bit rushed about it and, and won't wait. And so, you know.
Time is money, so, you know.
I get it.
That's the way we see it, but.
But there is one other thing I want to mention about some of these, some of these permits and things. We're working very closely now through our new system to have an online opportunity for many of our contractors to be able to do those things online, pay for them online, and receive the actual permit online. So I think there's gonna be some things built in that will help speed up some of those processes and make your jobs easier when you're out there working.
One of the statements, and I see it in here quite often, is in the absence of a formal study recommendation or schedule of adopted rates. So basically, is that just saying that, that this will increase each year unless the commission says yea or nay?
It's, so, we would have to bring it back each year to the commission. But what it's saying is we don't have to do a full rate study every year, like we've done. That's taken us two years to complete. It's saying we can come back every year and ask for the CPI without going through a full study.
And then, my next one is 28-02-120 is, is the liens and charges. That's been a very, very, and it doesn't look like anything's actually changing there, but since we're talking about it, you know, that's been very heated, likely in the rental market. The landlords are being stuck with a water bill that they did not sign up for. And I understand we have the, the waiver we can sign, but I, I've been chewed on numerous times by people that, that lien needs to somehow follow that tenant, not the property owner. Because like P&amp;M and New Mexico Gas don't charge the property owner. We may have our hands tied, we may not be able to, but.
So, and, and that's part of, P&amp;M and New Mexico Gas have a leg up on that because they're state, and so they can, they have a bigger database than we do. However, you know, there is part of that. So, yeah, 20 just basically says that, that we can lien the ones. There's another area in here, back in the utility billing part of it, outside of, because this is still in the sewer one, that discusses more about the owner responsibility. And I think we did make some changes to that.
I think there was, but I don't remember reading that.
I think it was kind of consistent with, with this issue here, because that's part of the problem. We, we end up with all these liens and forebodings because of, of the situation he talked about.
Yes, exactly.
And, and so we're trying to fix that, where that's not gonna be the issue.
Where it follows the person that signed up for the service rather than the owner of the property.
So, so in 28-03-060, where it talks about the billing procedure, number E does still say that any unpaid charges for water, sewer, or garbage collection will result in a lien upon the property served by such services in its period of all other liens, unless the owner has filed a city notarized form releasing owner of responsibility.
So it's still going to, unless we sign the waiver?
You still are gonna have to sign the waiver if you want it to not lien your property. Because we have probably about 50/50, because we have some people, like, for example, at the housing authority, we never filed the waivers because we wanted to have our tenants pay the lower deposits. And so, yeah, we ate water bills, it happened. But we felt that it helped our occupancy.
And then, a lot of the technical in here, like with the pHs and, and the, the temperature of the liquids, how do we enforce that? How are you gonna know what I'm dumping down the drain?
Well, we do that by industrial discharge. Currently, we only have two places. One is out there on Airport Road, and that's the Septic Haulers. The other one would be the RO plant on La Belle. And they have, well, both of them have manholes that we can go in and test at any time. Usually, we can pick up these, anytime we get hits out there at the plant, we usually will go back to those locations, you know, and start testing to determine either we're getting something wrong from an industrial discharge or somebody's doing an illicit discharge.
So it's not so much from residential users dumping stuff? It's more from the larger people dumping into the system?
Correct.
I just didn't know how we were going to enforce any of that. It's like, we're gonna go in their house and test if they're-
No, and we're currently, I mean, we're currently working with the Burgendorf facility out there on La Belle, because they're doing some upgrades, and we're making sure that, that they're compliant with our existing. Which is, all's we're doing is getting a little bit tighter. We're protecting our, our system long-term.
And then, most of my other questions had to do with the backflow testing and, and, you know, the install of the meters. I noticed it said there was a double check valve in there. Is that going to be just on like all these new residential meters? Or is that more on the commercial side, where we have a, a larger? Can't think of the word, but we're, we're more liable.
A bigger hazard?
More of a hazard, yes.
Yeah, so almost all commercial businesses have to have a backflow. It's whether, whether an RP or a reduced principal, high hazard exists, or if we're just using the dual check, or double check, sorry. But on all the residential, we have the check valve as well.
Yes, and but, and then I noticed in there, there was a section about testing. Is that going to be mainly for the commercial side? Or is, is every residential customer gonna have to start paying to test their backflow?
No, it's commercial.
It's just on the commercial only, because it didn't really specify.
Yeah, commercial irrigation, we don't have too many accounts. Any, any residential places that actually have a, a well?
Well, we can get cross-contamination.
Yeah, then we have to make sure that we have that. Problem is, is half of that ordinance has been on the books for so long, and it was mandated back in the early 2000s. However, the city has been very non-proactive about it.
I just was worried that we may put an undue cost on every resident by having to have a yearly backflow test.
No, that's just residential, not our commercial.
And so that ordinance, we pulled it out of chapter eight and put it into 28. So that's why it's all graded out, but it's been on the books. We just pulled it into the appropriate place.
And then the section in there on the, on the fire suppression systems, basically, that system will have to have their, its own specific backflow to prevent contamination, cross-contamination as well?
That's correct.
Okay. So that, that's really not gonna affect, but just a handful of buildings in town, so. Okay. I think that was all, and like I say, I just, the timelines is the big one for us with permits and inspections.
And I think we can do that entirely, so.
And I did, I did see we referenced the technical review committee and P&amp;Z in there for some of those permits. And that review, that review committee kind of does hold things up sometimes, so.
Well, and, and that's why sometimes we have to be careful about that timing, because it, it does involve not, it's not just one person making that decision. So for some reason, if, if that technical review committee has a, a delay in being able to meet, and, and there's some critical, like if Dave can't be there, and we've got some critical sewer or water issues, we may, you know, that 48 hours could be an issue, so.
Yeah, because it deals with fire, it has public works, utilities, planning and zoning, so there's a lot of departments that need to make sure that their parts are okay. None of it's intentional, we try to get, we meet every Thursday and try and get those going, but there are, they're complicated, so we try to, yeah. Some of them are.
There won't be any intentional trying to hold stuff up. And I think, you know, we do stuff here pretty much faster than, than some others. There, there's been a couple of folks that you've talked to, that, that I've talked to, that I'm like, you know what, you need to wait a little bit here, because we're, we're getting this done, it just doesn't happen overnight.
Well, we're, we're used to the private sector, and we make it happen overnight, and.
Well, and I get that, but cities don't operate like that.
Because this is just the first stop for the builders, because of the system that we're on. You know, it, it stops here, and, and our fees, you know, what we pay you guys here are two to three times higher than what we pay for the one we actually have to have in order to do the job. So, and the holdup timeline-wise here is way longer than what it is at the other one, so.
Well, and, and we want to, you know, I've sent y'all a thing that I, that we're fixing to do here, which has to do with how we respond to you and other customers, and that is part of the deal, is to speed that process up and move quickly and efficiently.
Business friendly, you know.
Absolutely, we want to get more so.
Responsive, I think, is what it's under.
So we'll take that and work on some internal policies that I'll share with you as we get it done.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
I'm not done yet.
Does anybody else have any, just kidding, sorry.
You have one correction.
Anybody? No?
When he was talking about the Fahrenheit, it says 50 degrees, it should be 65.
I thought they were all good questions, that I understood happened.
Just like the tech standards, I mean, this stuff, this, this impacts an entire industry in our community, and, and when this stuff slows down, it, it affects that.
I, absolutely.
We sit here and grab about affordable housing, but some of this stuff drives the cost up.
I, I agree, I agree. I've gotten a lot of comments in the last few weeks on this, so. We all brace ourselves, that's okay.
Hopefully, hopefully, we don't get a referendum of either of these two ordinances or recall petitions on us for these rates, so.
There is actual legal precedent that we have not referendum city tax rates that the city researched in 1994 when that initially came out, so.
They can repeal the ordinance that we just passed though. They can't repeal the rates, but they can repeal the ordinance. Remember, we're not the boss, these guys are, well, not, most of the public's gone home, but. These guys are the boss.
Well, and I, and I do think that, I think, I'll just say, my biggest frustration with all of this after hearing the presentation was that, I, I mean, I don't know. I didn't know, I mean, that's, that's really what it boils down to. When I saw some of the infrastructure and some of the things, and I didn't know. Should I have known? I mean, I guess we all should have known, I don't know. But, but I think the reason this looks so bad is because we haven't had a rate increase in 10 years. And, and that in itself is disappointing. That's something that probably should have been brought to our attention a lot sooner. And it, you know, I compared it to, I was, I remember in the presentation talking about DirecTV of all things, and I went to this DirecTV stream, and it was, when I signed up for it, it was like $60. And that was like, I don't know, four or five years ago.
Mine was 39, and now it's like 150.
And now it's like 100 and something dollars, and that's just been in the last few years. And so, did I keep paying it every month, every year? I kept paying it, and then one day I realized, man, I'm paying a lot of money for this, this is not of value anymore. But do I keep paying it every single month? I keep paying it, because I like my DirecTV. So I think, I think had it been done gradually over 10 years, I don't think people would have thought as much about it. But unfortunately, it wasn't. And so now we just have to, we have to do what we have to do, so. You can see in the grand scheme of things, when we look at all the rates across the board for all these different cities, right in the middle, it's not, not really that bad. I mean, it's bad, but it's not that bad. And I have several water accounts too, so I'm like shooting myself in the foot here. But, but I think as for the city as a whole, I think, I think this is good.
We're, we're gonna have a, a group in the city that this is gonna impact pretty heavily. But, let's see, it's-
It's a necessary evil, to some extent, you know.
We'll see what the rates come in when they bring them to us, so.
Yeah, you know, it is.
That's all we have in terms of the ordinance.
So there, you have the information on there too?
So that's actually what's gonna come forward, those rates?
Yeah, they're in there, just a draft of it, so you'll get an idea.
So I do have one more change, Madam Mayor, on section 28-02-320. Section E, item A, it says, "Any liquid or vapor having a temperature higher than 150 degrees Fahrenheit, or," and I, I put 50 degrees, it should actually be 65. I got that, those two mixed up, that's on.
Okay, did everybody get that?
So I'll repeat it, 28-02-320, item E, and where it says, "Any li-" Item EA, "Any liquid or vapor having a temperature higher than 150 degrees Fahrenheit, or," right now it says 50 degrees Celsius, it should be 65 degrees Celsius.
Okay, I see it.
Here goes my hot shower.
Let me tell you, I spent a lot of time looking at this, my eyes were going cross-eyed. So that was, I, I-
There, there again, that's one of those, is how do we enforce that? You know, those temperatures and stuff, we're not gonna know where it's, you know. I just, I'm not sure how we're gonna enforce that part of it, you know. I understand the need for it, so that we can cite if we need to, but.
No, I think if we get to that point, we'll need to enlist a, the, the expertise of a pre-treatment coordinator under the city that would actually go in and check this industrial treatment, if we ever get to that point. But we have to have the ordinance in place now, that way, because we, businesses might, may want to come here, and if we have no idea how to handle them, I mean, at least this gives us a leg up.
As a matter of fact, when some of those businesses do come, that's one of the questions that we ask.
The microbreweries, is it true that some of the water that they use for brewing their beer might violate some of those pH numbers?
Not to my knowledge, as of right, yeah.
Whenever they, I, I don't know how it all works, but when they dispose of the water, somebody was telling me that, that some of that water can potentially violate those pH numbers.
Yeah, I'd say it's got the potential. I'm not a microbrewer, so I don't know.
I don't either, somebody was telling me that, so.
Okay, any other questions? Does anybody know what time it is?
10 o'clock.
And I have one more item, so. If there are no more questions, do I have a motion to approve item 17 for first publication?
With changes.
With the changes. Okay, okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson, we'll take a second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Toffley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
She said aye for the records. Susan Payne?
Aye, motion passes 7-0. We're gonna move on to our last item, appointments to boards and committees. I was a little confused, and that's what my text was, to please go print these out for me, because there was several of them, and I couldn't figure it out. So, with that, the first one, I have two upcoming vacancies on the airport advisory board due to the expiring term of Eric, I'm gonna butcher his last name, Worshing, Worshing? And, did I get that right? Oh, I did, okay. And Manuel Gonzalez. Applications were received by Eric, Eric Worshing, Manuel Gonzalez, and Alexandria Russo. If, if Ms. Russo were appointed, it'd be her first term. Mr. Gonzalez is appointed, it'll be his sixth term. And if Eric Worshing's appointed, it'll be a sixth term. I'm gonna go ahead and reappoint, if there's no objections, reappoint Manuel Gonzalez and Eric Worshing, if there's no objections. I'm gonna go ahead and reappoint them to that committee. Ms. Russo did have, yeah, she had a second option, but it's the Almogordo Disability Council, and we have disbanded that. If there's any other openings on any other boards, maybe we could reach out to her and see if she's interested. and see if she's interested, that would be lovely.
I can definitely do that.
Yes, thank you. The next one is the airport zoning board. I do have one application from Billy Tucker. It looks like there are three current vacancies on that board. If nobody has any objections, I do know him very well. I did not know he was applying, but if nobody has any objections, I am going to go ahead and appoint him to that board. No objections, okay. So Billy Tucker is appointed to the airport zoning board, I'm sorry. The Almagordo Public Library Board, we have two upcoming vacancies due to the expiring term of Rhonda Alterson and Cindy Stevenson. An application was received by Rhonda Alterson. If reappointed, this would be her second term. I'm going to go ahead and reappoint her, if there's no objections. Okay, and so we're going to go ahead and reappoint her to that. And then the last, no, it's not the last one, I'm sorry. Let's see, wait a second. Let me make sure I got this right. Yeah, this is the one where I got confused, okay. Yes, I'm sorry, the last one is the Parks and Rec Board. I have two applications, one from Lori Armstrong and one from Mark Werner. Ms. Armstrong, this would be her third term. Mr. Werner, this would be his first term. I'm going to go ahead and reappoint Lori Armstrong to that, to that board, if there's no objections. Mr. Werner did also apply for the airport advisory board. There are no openings, same thing, maybe we could reach out to him if there are any other openings on any other boards and see if maybe he's interested in that, like maybe the library board or something, but... Or what was this other one? The zoning board, the airport zoning board, he may be interested in that. As well as Ms. Russo, it looks like there's a couple of openings on that. So if you want to reach out to them...
I will definitely reach out to both of them.
That would be lovely. Okay, with that, is there anything else? Okay, fine. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald on the phone. Do I have a second, Commissioner Burnett? Second from Commissioner Burnett, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And we are adjourned, thank you.